Good evening. We are reconvening in public session. If I could ask Lisa Raleigh, teacher at Luther Middle School, plus some students from there, you can come up to the podium and tell us your name, and then you can lead us in the flag salute.
Hello, my name is Jackson Kaplan. May everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. In closed session, in the matter of expulsion of student number 960033615 on the motion of member Dr. Weisberg and seconded by Mr. Fritner, based upon the board's review in closed session of the finding of fact and recommendation submitted by the administrative hearing panel, the board accepts the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel to expel student number 960033615 based on violation of ed codes 48900, 48915, 48900A1, 48915B, 48900B, and 489151AB. The board adopts the plan of rehabilitation recommended by the panel with the following modifications, there are none. The board voted 4-0 in favor of accepting the recommendation of the board, of the government board. Okay, so that's all we need for that. Moving on, Ms. Clark, could you please take roll call?
Member Fritner?
Present.
Member Akakanyan?
Present.
Clerk Weisberg?
Present.
Vice President Ferguson, noted as absent, and President Tappett?
Present.
Thank you.
Adjustments to the agenda. Done? Okay. Items for future agendas, yes?
Yikes, sorry. I'd love to do, to get a report back on where we are in regards to reinstating the share tables at our school sites. That would be, and also, sort of tangentially, where we are in regards to putting into place the separation of food waste and regular waste.
Yeah, with the new laws in effect now?
Yeah.
We have some changes to make.
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to go back to two items. One is where we are when it comes to recognizing some of the sponsors and supporters we had in the past. We've talked about maybe acknowledging regularly in some of our meetings if we can. I had asked for a report, and I would like to see where we are on that.
What ex, okay.
Yeah. We talked about it several months ago. You know, some of the donors have been there consistently for us, supporting our schools. I think it would be nice, a good gesture to recognize them, give them a certificate for their services. Continue.
Can, is that something we can add for discussion in closed session as a board?
It would not be a closed session item. Where we left the last one is if we have a grant cycle, we would invite the donors and acknowledge them at that cycle, or if we're celebrating a program that has been a recipient of grants, we talked about that's when we would do it. So we can, we can try, we can schedule that out.
Okay.
Because I know November 3rd, we're going to have Burbank Arts and Education Foundation come, so we can recognize them at that event as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the second one was also, that was brought up a while ago, but, you know, I had asked if we can create some kind of a space in our building where we acknowledge our past school representatives with little plaques with their names and what year they served.
Dr. Akakanyan, we have that.
We already have that?
Yeah. It's right outside the boardroom door.
Oh, we got, good.
Right outside.
See, we did it.
Yeah, we did it.
Okay. Mr. Fritner, sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you. In light of the recent cybersecurity issue in LAUSD, I'd like to have us bring back in a future meeting what steps we are currently working on. I know Mr. Vonk in subcommittee earlier this week talked about some of the items we've been working on, so I'd like a report back in a future meeting to detail exactly what's going on and what additional steps we may be looking at.
Thank you. And then we'll also agenda for closed session superintendent's evaluation for the next meeting, too. For, no, I'm sorry, two meetings down the road. November 3rd? Yeah. Thank you. Everybody got theirs in? All right. Thank you. Moving on to presentations and recognitions, today we are recognizing Lisa Fuentes, excuse me, the 2022 Teacher of the Year. Dr. Knappich.
Good evening, Board President Tappett, Board Member Superintendent Hill, Senior Leadership, and the Burbank School Community. It is an honor and a great pleasure this evening to introduce our selection of our district Teacher of the Year from William McKinley Elementary School, Mrs. Lisa Fuentes. And joining Ms. Fuentes is her principal, Liz, how does it say Lisa? Liz Castella from William McKinley School. Mrs. Fuentes has served the Burbank Unified District community for 11 years in a variety of capacities. She began as a substitute teacher in 2010 and has served as a response to intervention teacher, grade four teacher, and most recently, as a first-grade teacher. Ms. Fuentes has a bachelor's degree in liberal studies and education from California State University at Northridge. Her certifications include a multiple-subject clear credential and a CLAD certification. As a teacher, Ms. Fuentes holds high expectations for her students, both academically and behaviorally. She has strong classroom routines and structures, differentiates instruction, and has strong communication skills with her families. Lisa is a vibrant member of the McKinley School community and has served in a number of leadership roles, including grade-level lead, PBIS member, and social committee. She's married to her husband Rodney and has a son named Brayden. Please join me in congratulating Lisa as our Burbank Unified School District's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, President Tappett, Board Members, Dr. Hill. So great to see you all again. I just want to thank you. I am so honored to be represented in this capacity. As a product of Burbank Schools, this is actually quite memorable for me and is very special to my heart. Burbank is in my heart forever. I'm so passionate about teaching, and I am so appreciative of all the people that have helped me along the way, and I am proud to be part of the most exceptional teachers here in our district. Thank you so much.
Can we get a picture, Ms. Clark? These are the fun parts of the meetings, right? Reports from the board, our student representatives. We're going to start this evening with Catherine Fignani from Monterey High School.
Good evening, Board President Tappett, members of the board, Superintendent Hill, senior staff, and our amazing audience at home. So it's been pretty busy over at Monterey. Love to hear it. So this month has been Hispanic Heritage Month, and so ASB created a beautiful bulletin board to celebrate, and we decorated the school with amazing and talented artists, authors, athletes, activists, and overall successful people of Latin culture. So last week was Spirit Week, and some students created an awesome playlist of music to play at lunch from Central and South America, and we also played music from different genres of Latin music. And some of our students even took it upon themselves to give some dance lessons during lunch, so that was super fun. So we have some good news about our progress at Monterey, how we're doing as students. It's going amazing, by the way. So Ms. Weaver decided to review everyone's grades at the five-week mark, and I'm proud to share 39 more students were granted a lunch pass. So we're, we're doing good at Monterey. We're having some good improvement. So one of Ms. Weaver's goals is to have everyone have a post-high school graduation plan, so where you want to go to college, what kind of work you're interested in, things like that. So one way she's been helping students is having like LA Trade Tech and Otis Art College come, talk to our students about what's going on, different parts of financial aid, also talking about what classes they offer and what kind of support they can offer as well for our Monterey students. So it's been really motivating, and it's been really good to see that so many people are interested in furthering their education, especially when you think you're not going to get there. So it's really good to see smiles on everyone's faces. And our art teacher, Ms. Elliott, is setting up some classes to help students create portfolios if they're interested in going to art school. So that's going on right now, and then we're also having our counselor, Ms. Shraga, continue to get different school programs and colleges to come and talk about, you know, what they're all about and give our students some options. So looking forward, we're going to continue to celebrate all the diverse cultures coming up with Spirit Weeks and school activities on campus, as well as talking about it more on social media. So before I leave, I wanted to give you an update on our ping pong tournament. So we had two students from every advisory class participate, and Eric G. was the ultimate winner and earned a bunch of points for Ms. Lamir's class. She was very excited. So Ms. Weaver made her a golden ping pong paddle that she can display in her class. So we're going to continue to have competitions, we're going to continue to push each other, have fun, and just continue to have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next up, we have Serena Terpetrosian from, oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Weisberg has a question.
I have a quick question. It would be great to be able to see a picture of that bulletin board.
Oh, what?
So I don't know if there's a way, I mean, I can also contact Ms. Weaver about it, but it sounds awesome.
I can definitely get you some pictures.
Also, totally want to know about the playlist. That would be great. Well, now you're making me want to listen to Spotify.
Okay. All right. Serena, your turn.
Good evening, Board President Tappett, distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, and the Burbank community. So our club rush in this past month went extremely well with over 70 clubs being present. Tons of students got the chance to explore and see all the diverse clubs around campus. On September 23rd, ASB hosted our annual foam party and had over 400 students show up. After not being able to host one for two years, it was amazing to finally have, have it back and give students the opportunity to attend such a unique event. This Friday, tomorrow, our football team goes head-to-head against Crescent Valley at Memorial Field. The day, the game's theme is Pink Out in honor of breast cancer awareness, and it's also the football team's senior night. Also on sports news, last Thursday, our girls volleyball team had an intense game against Burrows. Now, although we didn't take the win this time, it was still a great game with tons of friendly competition. On October 3rd, this past Tuesday, our senior class lined up on our bleachers during third period to take the senior panoramic photo for the yearbook, and although it was a little chaotic, it turned out well. Our cultural showcase for Hispanic Heritage Month is planned to occur on October 14th during lunch in the middle of the quad, and our DEI commission in ASB has been working tirelessly to make sure that it's the best that it can be. Also in terms of DEI, our student survey was sent out to all students in their grade level Google classrooms, and DEI is encouraging all students to fill out the form. In the arts department, BHS's drama program is hosting a play called Clue, which is based on the board game. Their opening night is tomorrow at 7:00 PM, and there's more opportunities to see this mysterious play on October 8th at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM, on October 14th at 7:00 PM, and the last day to see it is on October 15th at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Our Palm Squad is also having a car washing fundraiser on October 8th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Foster's Freeze parking lot. So if you need a fun opportunity to come and support the arts, and you want to get a clean car out of it, make sure to come out and support. In homecoming news, our homecoming dance is set to take place on Saturday, October 22nd. Our theme was announced last Friday, and the theme is Old Hollywood Glamour, and I don't know if you guys saw, but we did play a prank on the school, we did a fake theme, and it was Jurassic Park, but then we dropped that and we revealed the real theme, and it was a great hit with our students. Ticket sales for homecoming start next week in our student store and on our BHS web store, and the tickets will be $30 if students have an ASB card and 40 if they don't. And the following week, the price will go up $5 for all students. Also, students are allowed to bring a non-BHS student this year as a guest, so it opens homecoming back up for everybody who missed it. They just have to fill out a guest contract. Also, Burbank High is really excited to be putting on our FAFSA workshop on October 20th. We highly encourage students and families to come in person to receive support for the FAFSA slash California Dream Act application. Many people may already know what to do, but for those who don't even know where to start, this is the place to have all your questions answered. The workshop will thoroughly explain the FAFSA application process, why it's so important, and provide direct support on filling out the actual application. Essentially, students and families need to create a FAFSA or California Dream Act ID, and then using their tax returns from the past year, they answer an extensive list of questions, and at the end, you see what grants you qualify for, what scholarships you qualify for, and as well as what loans you qualify for. As all our counselors have been saying, families and students should exhaust all grants and scholarships before considering any loans. Families may also have heard that two years of community college tuition can be covered, which is awesome, but they may not know that it requires you to fill out your FAFSA form, and that's why this workshop is so important. Counselors will be present at the event to provide support, and we want to give a specific shout-out to Ms. Miranda, who runs our college and career center, for helping set up this workshop, and Mr. Flores, because he's a really big help with this. Other than that, Burbank High is jam-packed with events this month, and I can't wait for the students to experience everything we have planned. Any questions?
Quick question, the car wash, what day and time is it?
It's October 8th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
I just want to know, did your principal survive the foam dance okay?
Yeah, it actually turned out a lot better. It was less students than we have had in the past, so there was one foam pit that was really packed, but there was a second foam pit that was an option for students to go in if they wanted like more space. So it was like two options, and we had face painting, so we did survive this year.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions?
The first one is always a little rough.
Yeah, it's a little scary, but thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Everwerta from JBHS.
Good evening, President Tappett, Clerk Weisberg, and distinguished board members, Superintendent Hill, amazing district staff, and amazing Burbank community watching and attending. I'm excited to share with you all the amazing and exciting things going on at Burrows. As we continue celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, tomorrow at Burrows, we are, we have the great honor in welcoming Baile Folcorico Mexico Azteca once again tomorrow in the quad, as they will be performing all seven different regions in Mexico and all the dances that they have. As well for Hispanic Heritage Month, we are planning our first-ever Hispanic food festival, which we have finally come with a name called Sabor Latino, or as in English, the flavors of Latin America. As well celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, we also made an amazing playlist, which even our students busted out dancing in the quad out of nowhere, which filled me with joy, and I learned, many of our students know how to do line dancing. So I have a video, and I will definitely be sharing that, because it was such an amazing experience seeing that. Our ASB is also busy working and planning our homecoming dance, which our theme is a masquerade done in New Orleans, Princess and the Frog type of style. Our senior class is working hard, and they're excited to get this dance ready for all our students to enjoy. As well tonight, our IMA is hosting their first-ever concert of the year called Life and Death, going off Dia de los Muertos. It is today's 6:00 PM in the auditorium, as well as our ASB is happy to share that our talent show was a major success. I will not lie, but I did do a good boogie to The Night Fever by the Bee Gees. As well, we, the talent show winner were a group of students with their teacher, Ms. Mays, who performed tequila, all with their own instruments, and it was amazing, and the grand prize for this talent show was $100. So they took that home, and they're excited for that. As well, our Spirit Week was a major success, hearing all the students being happy, with finally being able to participate and seeing all the amazing outfits, as well with all our amazing groups on campus, such as Link Crew, helping us on social media and sharing everybody with, especially their freshmen, with all their gear, which was so amazing. As well, I'm happy to share that our photo award, our photo class this year was awarded, our photo program actually, was awarded the California State Board Association Golden Bell Award, which was an exciting moment for our teacher, Ms. Clark, who has been working very hard with fundraising for her cameras and these new computers this year, which I'm really excited to have, because I'm taking the class, and they're really cool. As well, in the world of sports, on October 2nd, our volleyball girls and boys volleyball team held a fundraiser with a car show. There were some really cool cars I enjoyed seeing, 1956 Chevy Bel Air, which was my favorite one of the day. As well, our girls volleyball team beat Burbank in a clean sweep against 3-0 and a friendly competition as well. We definitely were happy that we took the win that night. As well, our football Friday last night, on, last week on Friday night, our Braves football opened up against Crescent Valley in the league opener, winning the score. As well, this Friday, they go on the road, taking on Pasadena. Now moving on to highlighting our amazing groups here on campus, our Link Crew, who hosted a scavenger hunt for our freshmen, sending them all around campus and doing various activities, such as a catwalk on the stage in the auditorium. They know how to catwalk. As in October, as well, they hosted many other various activities, such as their first OG Day, which was where they met with their Link Crew leaders at the beginning of the year, and they all got together, talked about how the school year is going, and bonded over the amazing stories and just experiences that they're having at Burrows. As well, they are excited planning our freshman tailgate for our Burbank versus Burrows games that will be taken in the back lot where the pool is, so they're excited to get that on and everything planning. As well, our college peer mentors have been working hard to helping our seniors getting ready with all the applications and deadlines coming at them, especially the FAFSA application. They have been holding workshops with them, with Mr. Kuglen, in, during our AE or academic excellence period, holding presentations on the FAFSA application, how to fill that out, tips on colleges, and also as well during third period, which is when their class period, they are coming in and taking out students, talking with them, meeting about their post-college plans, such as where do you want to go to college, what's your GPA, what are you thinking, and helping them, guiding them, giving them all the resources that they need. As well, that is all that I have, actually. So yeah, if you have any questions.
Well, that's a lot. I have a, I just need a clarification. You said Ms. Mays performed tequila on her instruments? She played more than one?
Oh, she played the drums, actually. So, so the drummer actually was sick that day, and they were all freaking out, they're like, who are we going to get, who are we going to get? And Ms. Mays was like, well, I know how to play the drums. And she bust out her drum set, and she got onstage and rocked it like nobody's business.
See, our teachers are amazing.
Yes, they are.
Things they can do. That's awesome. Thanks, Ever.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sorry. Okay. Okay. Now finally, we're moving on to requests to address the board. Public communication on agenda items. An individual or group represented may address the Board of Education on any agenda item. So if you would like to speak, please turn in a card to Ms. Clark, and I will go in order that they are received, not more than five minutes allotted to each speaker.
I was just going to ask, are we going to combine the public?
Yes.
Comment period.
Yes. We have one card that normally would be at the end, if we can add it in.
Okay.
I think it's just one, and that would be, or two now. That would be rough to wait all the way to the end. So, you guys good with that? Do we have any virtual?
No.
Okay. So then, moving ahead, our first speaker tonight will be Lisa Raleigh. Following Ms. Raleigh will be Alicia Hill.
Good evening, members of our school board, Superintendent Hill, and other members of the BOSD community. My name is Lisa Raleigh, and if I could say, as a proud mom, my son was in the band that won the talent show at Burrows, and I'm missing his performance tonight at Burrows because I'm here. So this, I'm very passionate about the topic that I'm talking about today. As you probably know, I've taught culinary arts for the past 16 years at Luther, and four years ago, I had expressed interest to my then-principal, Dr. Macias, about starting a school garden using the already-existing old garden space. I had envisioned a farm-to-fork project whereby the culinary program could experience the life cycle of seed to plate. He was very much supportive of the idea. I began to immerse myself in all things school garden implementation and funding. I found a wonderful free resource through the Alice Waters Edible Schoolyard Project in Berkeley, and as I completed the application, I was told I couldn't qualify for the week of training as my site did not have an active garden. Again, I talked to Dr. Macias about how I could get that ball rolling. He reached out to facilities, and after several months of waiting, we were told that the water in the existing garden was no longer potable. Then COVID hit, we were home. When school started back in August of 2020, as most teachers were teaching from home, I was at Luther every single day, and again, I was inquiring about the garden. As we had very, very few students and staff members on BOSD campuses, I thought we could implement a plan to ready the garden for the following school year. That didn't happen. After repeated emails from my principal to facilities, we learned that water irrigating the lawn outside the fence along Maple Street was non-potable, and for that reason, we could not have a garden in the existing garden space. Baffled by that response, I continued to push for a solution. I have met several times with the BOSD plumber to discuss how water from the lawn could affect the garden, and I haven't really gotten clear answers. All last school year, I continued to push for a garden at Luther. In the meantime, I have designed a new elective called Global Studies that combines culinary arts with environmental strategies to improve our physical climate. My class offers students a diverse education of global topics, all the while solving a universal problem, this year the theme is water, with like-minded peers from around the world. A garden space is ideal for this type of class, and an outdoor classroom space is ideal for every learner at Luther. Additionally, as we continue trying to increase enrollment and entice students to come to our school, a garden and outdoor classroom space adds even more benefits to an already amazing middle school. Years ago, with a Years ago, with a partnership from California Pizza Kitchen, the existing garden space was born and had previously been plumbed with drip lines, beds were created, and footpaths were cemented. There is a shed to store supplies and a fenced area to secure tools. I have loads of volunteers waiting to help resurrect this eyesore of a space, and we'll have some funds from PTSA's Sustainability Group. Last month, I reached out to facilities again as I tried applying for the $5,000 Burbank Arts and Education Foundation grant. I had envisioned the bulk of the money to go to purchasing new outdoor tables to create the outdoor classroom. I was told by the foundation that unless I had verified an irrigation source, my application would be denied. I needed facilities to sign the application. I emailed twice, twice, and was not given a response, twice. Therefore, I missed the application deadline and the chance to receive the $5,000 grant. I would like to apply for the next round of $5,000 grants in February, so I need help. I have had the support and permission from my principal from the get-go. I've had the support of Luther's PTSA. I have the support of my Global Studies kids, guys, cheer. I'm not asking for the district to fund the project. We just need to be able to irrigate plants. I'm not asking the district to use facilities' labor to clear out the weeds or garbage that's in the space. I have volunteers for that. I'm just asking to literally get this project started, so please help us realize a much-needed outdoor space for all Luther learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alicia Hill, followed by Jocelyn Udell.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Hill. My name is Elijah Hill, and I am a 7th grader at Luther Burbank Middle School. Today, I will be addressing our outdoor classroom at Luther. The Luther garden was abandoned before the pandemic, and somehow, some plants and trees have survived even though it's not being watered. Right now, it's a weed-infested wreck that's just an eyesore to anyone who sets their sight on it, which is not hard as it's visible along Maple Street. While talking to other scholars, they were surprised that we even had a garden. I personally didn't know about it until it was brought up in my Global Studies class, which decided that we wanted to bring an outdoor classroom to Luther Burbank Middle School. My class has taken the time to research about benefits that an outdoor classroom would bring to Luther. One immediate realization is that the benefit would be that kids would learn how to take care of the earth. We're learning about ways in which we can help combat the effects of global warming. We are someday going to be in charge of the world, so why can't we start leading now by planning plans that help the environment we live in? Another benefit for students is getting hands-on experience with how plants are grown. Some students are tactile learners, and a garden will facilitate their process of learning. In addition, this could also mean associating plants or gardening skills with states of matter or why the heating of the earth causes currents to change. Some studies have even shown that schools that had gardens, their population of students that were obese decreased. This makes sense because gardening and tasting fresh-grown food can encourage and introduce scholars to veggies and fruits that they found unlikable before. Lastly, with more data on school gardens being collected every day, it shows that it relieves stress, which I know is a great relief because middle school is stressful. I hope that my information provided will help you grasp how important it is for us as a Yellow Jacket community to have an on-campus outdoor classroom. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Jocelyn Udell, followed by Nicole Maggie.
Good evening, Burbank School Board. My name is Jocelyn Udell. I attend Luther Burbank Middle School. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Luther community. We have a strong need and desire for creating an outdoor space that we can be proud of. As it stands now, the existing garden space is an unkempt area visible to the public right off of Maple Street. I went to school in LAUSD, and at my elementary school, we had a reading garden where students could sit outside in the shade among plants and read. Kids at my school loved the outdoor experience because it was different from an indoor classroom setting where we spend most of our time. Now, I am a student at Luther, and I would love to bring that same joy here. I believe that Luther deserves an outdoor classroom because it could give the same benefits to all kids. Luther runs on three main principles: respect, excellence, and community. I believe an outdoor open space highlights all three of our values. As a student in Global Studies, our mission will be to teach Luther learners how to respect the newly created sanctuary. To highlight excellence, our goal will be to care for and maintain the garden. We see the garden as a chance to enhance the community experience at Luther. We also want to reach out to local businesses to gain their support in contributing to their neighborhood middle school. We see this as an opportunity to build positive relationships with the greater Burbank community. Please help us reach this goal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicole. Did I pronounce your last name correct?
It's Maggie, but that's fine.
Maggie. Thank you. Followed by Amy Fier.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Hill, Burbank School community. Thank you for having me. I will try not to get worked up, but I'm Italian, so I can't make any promises. I'm a Burbank homeowner and the parent of a Luther learner, right here in Ms. Rowley's class, where we just lost our principal, Dr. Macias. And it's very upsetting, and there has been a lack of transparency about the process of finding a new principal. Today, I got an email about some random person who is now our interim principal. I have never heard of this person. There was very little information on him. And I'm really curious as to what is going on as far as the search for a new principal. And I know that Dr. Macias is not the only principal to leave Burbank School District this year. He is, in fact, the eighth out of 19 principals to leave. And that is a reflection, I think, on the failure of the district to retain stars and gems like Dr. Macias. And I want to know what actionable steps you are taking to retain staff and make BUSD a desirable district to work in. I feel like Measure I failed, which was a travesty, and there was just, the board gave up. I feel like you guys gave up in trying to find viable solutions as to how to save this district. And right now, I think the district is failing our kids. I'm seriously looking into options for yanking my child out of Burbank, which I never, ever wanted to do. I am a huge proponent of public education. And frankly, you don't want me to leave this district because I'm a heavily involved parent. I am involved in the PTSA. I'm a Girl Scout troop leader. I'm heavily involved in the community. I am very invested in not only my child's education, but the education of her peers. And you want to keep parents like me in this district. And I want to know what you are doing to retain staff, keep parents in this district, and entice enrollment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Fier, am I pronouncing that correctly, Amy? Great. Followed by Rebecca Allen.
Good evening, Dr. Hill, President Tabit, and board members. I am a teacher and a parent in BUSD, and I am appalled by the care our facilities are given. Oftentimes, we hear about the need for curriculum or that money should be spent on technology. But I feel as of late, we have forgotten the most basic of needs in a classroom, how important it is to have a safe and clean learning environment. In the wake of the pandemic, many people have found themselves leaving the field of education due to the incredibly stressful nature of the job. This isn't limited to just the teachers in the classrooms, but also people in facilities and maintenance as well. There are several vacancies in our district now, as you know, but these problems have been going on much longer than just for the past two years. Whenever one of our fabulous custodians calls out sick or takes their very much-deserved vacation, our classrooms don't get cleaned. I have two stories I'd like to share tonight. One has been related to me by several teachers and instructional aides alike, and one happened in my personal classroom and resulted in a student getting hurt. I want to start the story by saying that this has nothing to do with the quality of work our custodial staff puts forth. It is not fair that many sites currently have one or two people doing the job of four or more. That being said, on numerous occasions this school year, I have heard stories of teachers cleaning their own rooms because there aren't enough custodians. And if a teacher can't find the time to do it, the instructional aides, who don't make nearly enough, have been stepping up, and parent volunteers have as well. Classrooms are going without repairs, and HVAC systems took weeks to fix during the heat wave we all experienced. Could you imagine being in elementary school and sitting on a classroom rug that has never been vacuumed? If you'd like to know what that's like, just go talk to our students. My students ask if they can sweep my floor on a regular basis in my classroom or take out my trash, because honestly, I don't have a break in my day to do it for myself, and they don't like how dirty things have gotten because our site is not adequately staffed. The thing that many people forget in the debate about teachers and what they deserve is that their work environment is the learning environment of our students. Is it right that I have to work where the floor is so filthy, it's black? Or in a room with the wall falling apart because of water damage from a leaky AC system? Or with ceiling tiles missing or fans rattling? No. But it's far worse for our kids. They sit on that floor and have to try to ignore that noise in order to learn. This can't continue. We need to take better care of our facilities, and we need to start by staffing and paying adequately. The second story that I would like to share happened in my classroom last week at Huerta. A student sat in her chair only to have it completely collapse beneath her. After checking that she was not injured and insisting she go to the nurse, I removed the broken chair so no one else could use it. When I moved it to the hall, I noticed that it was missing two screws. Upon further investigation, I noticed that these screws had been replaced by zip ties, which were the point of failure. In a district that claims to care about their students above all else, I find this reprehensible and shocking. If student welfare was truly the priority you claim it to be, this would never have been a possibility. After I told my principal Kenny Nup what had happened, he got to work on a solution to make sure no one else was surprised by broken zip ties. The following morning, every administrator, as well as our Title I coordinator, went room to room and inspected every single desk on our campus. After finding several in each classroom that were loose, Facilities was contacted. Next, Facilities employees arrived on our campus around 1:00 in the afternoon. They spent the next eight hours tirelessly repairing every single broken chair on campus properly. How did it get this bad? How are there so many broken chairs on a single campus that our already exhausted Facilities team had to spend eight hours repairing them? It should be standard practice that when floors are done in the summer, desks should be checked for integrity and repaired if necessary. These are just two small pieces of a larger puzzle that is falling apart. These problems need to be addressed and fixed immediately so our students can learn in a space worthy of them, and teachers can worry about teaching and not facilities. We need to do a better job and restore confidence in our district leadership because our students and employees deserve better. Let's do better. Thank you.
Rebecca Allen, followed by Rosemary Morrison.
Hi, board members, superintendent. Thank you. I filled out the blue card. I really appreciate you accepting it right now. Thank you. My name is Rebecca Allen. I'm a parent of a 4th grader at Roosevelt and a 7th grader at Luther. I am Sustainability Chair at both the Roosevelt PTA and the Luther PTSA. I'm a member of the Burbank Eco Council. I am a Burbank Waste Warrior graduate, and I helped develop the Waste Sort Program at Roosevelt last year that is thriving, and I am happy to volunteer my time at any other school to help that waste sort and share table get on its feet. I also led the Burbank Eco Council's presentation to Superintendent Matt Hill that led to the creation of the Superintendents Environmental Action Committee. Last fall, when there was a dire need of substitutes, I became a BUSD substitute teacher. I love this district. I love Burbank. I love the community. And as you can see, I am willing to give my time and energy to it. At Roosevelt, over the last five years, as Sustainability Chair, we have folded the garden under the umbrella of sustainability because we want the gardens to be sustainable. I know a lot of the complaint is when the teacher who is passionate about it leaves or the parent is passionate, matriculates, then the garden falls into disarray. By putting it under the heading of a Sustainability Committee, it sustains. Because there will always be a chair, there will always be someone in charge of it, and we constantly work to bring in younger student parents, TK parents or 6th grade parents at a middle school, so they will keep joining, and we will never lose the people who take care of the garden. We have created a thriving sensory garden and in addition to that, an outdoor learning area where teachers and classes will adopt garden beds and use them as teaching tools. The kids come alive in the garden. I mean, kids love dirt, kids love water. It's also a really special space in the Roosevelt Sensory Garden because it is open during recess, and for the children who are not sporty or don't like to run around or maybe just need some quiet time, they can go there and hear wind chimes and sit with plants and get ready for the rest of their day. The Roosevelt Gardens were built on volunteer time, donations, and PTA money. Along with kids and some fabulous teachers and staff, we take ownership of it. We maintain it. It is not a drain on any member of any department, and we ask nothing from the district when it comes to a garden. Last year, when I became the Sustainability Chair at PTSA at Luther, my priority one was getting that defunct garden going. I've been looking at it since my daughter played volleyball in kindergarten. I've been waiting six years to get my hands on that thing. Dr. Macias was all in. We took a tour of the school. He was so excited. I said, I am here. I am here to make these dreams come true. We will have a garden. I can do the sort table. All volunteer time, all PTSA funds. And I have been banging my head against the wall. I mean, I've only been doing it for a year now. Poor Lisa Rowley, who is a gem of a teacher, has been doing it for far longer than I have. Dr. Macias was very supportive. He said, we're waiting for facilities. Then we were told it was something about the drip system. Then we were told it was something about the outside irrigation. You've heard all the stories. We've gone through it. Finally, I went to the Sustainability Committee at the superintendents level. I said, what can you do to help me? We want to get this garden going. They talked to Debbie Kutka. She did a little investigating. She said it was a gasket. We need a gasket replaced. We need a gasket replaced. Okay, like, please. I mean, it is very evident that Facilities is understaffed, overworked, and clearly, a garden is not their priority. They need to fix ceiling tiles and have the kids in air conditioning. We get that. If you could take the time to replace a gasket, Luther has the people ready and willing, the money ready and willing, the teachers, the kids, the kids, the kids, the kids, ready and willing to do this. I have a personal philosophy when something needs to get done. It's don't bring me a problem without a solution. Well, we have a solution. I just don't know what our problem is, so I need you to help us identify it, and we will get it rolling over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Rosemary Morrison, followed by Joel Stlosman.
Good evening, everybody. Glad to see you all again. It's so interesting that a lot of the people came up here to talk about communication because, as you know, we have not been communicated with as parents about Disney's playground. We are still, nothing's been paved. The website has not been updated since July. I'd like to have a timeframe on when we are going to, I know you said our grass field is early November, I believe. That's 60, 90 days. But I'd like to have an update, and I think my son especially would like to have an update on when he can have his four-square and double-square and wall and all the stuff that belongs on a child's playground, a student's playground, and it doesn't look like a prison still. Yeah, it's bad. There are also pieces of the playground that over the last couple of weeks have fallen off. When I asked him today before I brought it up, I was like, has it been fixed? He did say it was fixed, so I appreciate that, but I think this goes back to the whole facilities issue. I know that I've spoken with a couple of people that there are things still in the new building that has not been completed, and it's been open now for three months. There are still shades not up there, up in the windows. I don't know about you, but when we have drills, it pretty much needs to be covered because how are we going to, I hate talking about this in front of kids, but we all know if we need to protect our students during anything, we need to make sure we can cover. There are nothing on those windows, so I am a little worried about that. Has the inside of the buildings been completed? I was visiting a friend. I noticed that we still don't have paper towels. I noticed that we still don't have paper towels in the new building. There's a lot of little things that are not done yet, and I can definitely see why Ms. Fuer is here. You know, I used to work here, so we know that there is issues. We need more custodians. I hate to compare schools, but, I mean, I moved outside of this district, and I have six custodians, and it is amazingly different. And I do think that we need to invest in our facilities, invest in our day-to-day, because this is a little ridiculous, and we live in one of the most, you know, famous cities in the country. I know we're not all rich, so I can't say that, because I'm not, but what else? Hold on, I'm gonna keep going. All right, I think that's it. Oh, communication! Oh, my gosh. Please communicate with us more. You're not communicating. That's all. I'm done. All right. And also, oh, wait, sorry, I'm not done. I'd like to commend the students, because I came with nothing prepared. They come up so well. They write it out, and they present things, and I definitely admire you. So, good job.
Thank you, Rosemary. Mr. Schlossman, it's you.
Good evening, once again. That explains it. I never knew I was Italian. You know, Ms. Weisberg, I want to acknowledge you that you stood for the flag salute today, and I want to thank you. And I think it's important, you know how I feel about civics, and all those times that you didn't rise, it left me wondering what you were protesting, and my conjecture was abortion, treatment of blacks, homosexuals, racism in America. I never knew what it was, but I thought it was improper for you to use your position here and not be a good example for the kids. So let me just say thank you for rising for the flag salute. There was a tragic event that involved schoolchildren in the Philippines. Thailand? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thailand. And it involved the killing of 36 people, 22 of which were children, and I think it was really youngsters. And I think that these horrible events, which I can never get my mind around, that happen all over the world, I think that they're largely unstoppable. But I wonder what we can do to prevent them, and I believe when they occur, there should be an immediate engagement of the bad person. And here in California, the courts have ordered that police chiefs across California issue concealed weapons permits. Many police chiefs have not issued them, and the courts have found that that is improper, and we all have a right to the Second Amendment. So, Mr. Superintendent, I'm hoping that you will give some thought to the Burbank's position on allowing your employees, well-vetted, selected employees. And for example, you recently brought in a man from Texas, who was a military man, had experience with firearms, and maybe had the right temperament for this type of thing. I don't know why you're smiling, Ms. Weisberg. This is kind of a serious topic I'm talking about. I want to do everything we can do to protect our children, and if we have capable, sound-minded persons, I think that this option should be considered. There are many concealed weapons holsters that are secure and would be appropriate. So would you please give that some thought? I really don't want this to happen here and say we could, we should, that type of thing. It's a heavy burden on you, and I realize that, but protecting kids is very important as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman. That was our last speaker, so we will move to staff responses. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, President Tabbitt, and thank you to all the speakers this evening. Thank you, especially to the students, Ms. Rowley, to talk about the Luther Garden. As you all were speaking, I went ahead and emailed Mr. Cross, our Director of Facilities, and tried to get up to speed. As one of the speakers said, Ms. Kutka gave approval back in August, and so I don't know why the delay is, but I asked Mr. Cross to take a plumber out to Luther tomorrow to meet with you, Ms. Rowley. I am so sorry that this is taking so long. There should be better communication coordination between sites and our departments, and we should be fully transparent with everyone involved about, if there is a roadblock, this is the roadblock, and this is what we need to work together. So we will make sure that we get over any roadblock there is, and we're going to get this garden going. So, thank you all. Ms. McGee, thank you for your comments. The search for the new principal, we are currently recruiting for the principal right now. It closes on October 30th. In the interim, as you mentioned, you saw in the email, we have a retired administrator who has been a teacher, a principal, a superintendent, who will be coming to Luther-Burbank starting Wednesday, where we'll make sure that Mr. White is introduced to all the parents and the faculty. He will be serving as interim. I want to thank Dr. Anders, who has been serving as interim since this past Monday, and he will transition with Dr. Param to make sure that we're successful. As we get closer to the 30th, we will give updates on the recruiting process. We'll continue the search until we have an outstanding administrator. We flew the position once, and there was not a candidate that was moved forward for selection, so we're going to keep recruiting. To your question on retaining staff, there's many reasons people leave. Dr. Macias, I wish him well for his promotion and the opportunity. We didn't have that type of opportunity here in Burbank, but I do know that we need to make sure, and the board knows, that we are advocating at the state level. We did not stop when Measure I did not pass. We've been advocating at the state level, and this is the biggest year of funding that we have received in this district, and we will be having conversations about how we can invest the one-time funding we received from the state, almost treat it like a partial tax, because it's one-time, because it's limited in the timing, but we can invest in some of the things that we had to reduce because of the budget cuts and bring those back, and we're also talking about how we can enhance that. Those conversations will be happening throughout this fall into December. So that's one, because we know we are short-staffed, and that goes into some of the other comments around facilities and other areas. And compensation's important, and that's where we have to look at ongoing funding. And part of our advocacy was for a bigger cost of living adjustment, and so that is something we can negotiate with our unions for this year. There is an opportunity to negotiate ongoing compensation increases. Last year, we were able to give a 5% increase. We know that's not enough. We need to continue to look at increases that we can do this year. So the board and staff, we have been advocating for additional funding. We need to make sure that the support's there in the schools, and continue to have open dialogue and conversation about where morale is low, where there's struggles, and we continue to work together and not have an us versus them, but we're all working as a community in Burbank to address those concerns. Ms. Fuer, thank you for sharing your concerns about facilities. We have a facilities subcommittee with two board members. I'm included in that with our Director of Facilities, and we're continuing to talk through different ways to increase applicants for some of these positions that we haven't been able to fill. We know with minimum wage going up, we're seeing more and more individuals that are changing jobs, custodians, grounds, some are trades, cafeteria, so we have to be creative. We have to negotiate higher wages, but at the same time, we have to look for opportunities to increase. So I know Dr. Nieman has met with Mr. Nogera, who's at our adult school. There's some innovative programs that we're going to be launching, probably hopefully in January, to have a custodial pathway into the district through the adult school, as well as increasing our outreach. Mr. Nogera's enrollment has gone through the roof, given his energy and his social media presence, his media presence, television, radio, so we're asking him to help promote the jobs that we have vacancies, job boards, job fairs. So that's just one element that we're looking at. We're looking at multiple strategies. We're looking at using some of the COVID funding to have four additional permanent custodians. I know that's not enough, but it's the next step, where we have more custodians that we can deploy when we have a vacancy, or deploy when we have absences. So I just want to share just a snippet. I can talk more in details about what we're doing at a board and staff level to address the concerns, but we hear you, and we will continue to work through that. Regarding the broken chairs, we had an individual that thought that would be a quick fix. We're now making sure there's clear protocols. If a chair's broken, how to report it, how to get it fixed. And so that was just a misunderstanding. It was well-intentioned, but not the safety level that we want. So we have addressed that, and we're going to make sure that it's clear standards, like you said, during the summer. When the cleaners report a broken chair, and we can fix it rather than wait for multiple to be fixed. So clear protocols and communication facilities, we're going to make sure that that's happening. And then the two last speakers on different topics. Ms. Morrison, great to see you as always. I'm glad you keep coming back. So that means that you continue through your career path, and there's going to be opportunities. Yes. Couple of updates that you want. We'll make sure that website's updated. In the facilities meeting on Monday, it was updated that within the next two weeks, the playground should be striped. So the plans have been approved. Mr. Cross is working with the contractors to align when they do it, either be on the weekend is when they will do that. Grass fields, we had to get approval first, and then the 90-day start, so that got pushed. But the good thing is, the grass has been growing before the approval, so it's going to be nice and lush and good grass. So 90 days, he said it was a week ago, I believe, in the facilities subcommittee, so it's really going to be January when the fence can come down and we can have the students. And then he did report to our contractors, the playground that got fixed, and we're still working with Silver Creek on the punch list items. We'll make sure that the shades and the paper towels are highlighted there. Mr. Schlossman, it's not an agenda item, so it can't have a big dialogue about concealed weapons, but I'll just be very clear for the board, it's a board policy. I don't support it at all. I've researched the topic. I do take student safety very seriously. I do not feel arming teachers or staff or any employees in the district is the best thing for student well-being, mental health, and safety. I just have not seen any research that shows that that will prevent a massive shooter or be beneficial for our students. So I personally don't support it, but I know it's a broader board discussion that we can't talk about this evening, because it's not agendaized, but just wanted, since you asked me, I just wanted to share it for the record. Thank you all.
Thank you. We can move on to board members' responses. Mr. Fritner?
Thank you. Thank you to all our speakers who came out tonight, especially the students. I know most of them have left. I think all of them have left, but we always, as we've said at the last meeting and every meeting when they come out, we appreciate them learning to advocate on the things that are important to them. To, we had various speakers regarding the garden. The superintendent has mentioned that he's already contacted Mr. Cross. Ms. Allen mentioned, among her comments, was we have had trouble with sustaining gardens. There's been a lot of times over the years where people have wanted to start, and whether it was a staff member leaving, or, as you mentioned, families matriculating through, and then no one steps in, it's become an issue of sustainability. I do love the idea of developing the pipeline, because that is the way it would work, and certainly this is something that is going to be more important moving forward. I love Ms. Rowley's class idea, you know, the field of fork, I think is the way she phrased it. It's fantastic, and we should be doing that. And, you know, and yes, our students should be learning more about sustainability, about climate, about gardens. So, I'm, excuse me, I'm all for that, and yes, if we've had something stopping up the works, then we need to get that corrected, and I'm confident that with Mr. Cross out there tomorrow, that we can hopefully get that done immediately. I do remember when the garden was active at Luther, and it was very nice. It was kept very well. And then the person who was really leading that moved on, and we wind up with a space like that. So this sounds like a much better opportunity to have something, and this is probably a good kind of starter project, because there's so much already in place that we can maybe see how well this goes and then work towards possibly expanding it. Ms. Matchi left already, but I will say, you know, the superintendent talked about the process already with the replacing. Dr. Macias, it is very important to us to try and retain staff. We have had several people leave, and we won't talk about, you know, individual reasons, but there are many reasons people change jobs. And especially in the last few years, after the pandemic, many industries, many school districts are dealing with this same type of issue. I will say, one remark she made, that after Measure I failed, that the board gave up, I have to respectfully disagree. If anything, we've worked harder, because we knew we weren't going to have that funding that we were so counting on, that we're not counting on, we are hoping for. As the superintendent mentioned, we have had almost constant communication with our state representatives, Senator Portantino, Representative Friedman, other representatives within the state, even at the national level with Congressman Schiff, always trying to find ways to improve what we don't have at the moment. We also look at, and we went right from not passing Measure I a month later, not even a month later, a week later, the pandemic shut down the schools, and so we were plunged into two and a half years of dealing with that, which made certainly teachers' lives were incredibly harder, trying to deal with distance learning. And Ms. Fuer, I can see you laughing, and I know, I appreciate so much everything that had to be done, because our teachers did a fantastic job getting through that, but it was an incredible challenge, and it was something that affected the way some teachers decided whether they still were going to continue doing that. I have family members who were, and I've mentioned before, were teachers, and one who decided to retire, because it was just too much to keep doing that. So we understand the importance of retaining people, retaining our best staff. We will continue to find options, you know, ways. We were able to get a raise this past year for everyone, and we will certainly be looking to try and do that again this year. We will always have challenges with our budget, but we do have some one-time funding, as the superintendent mentioned, so that is incredibly important to us, and we will continue to find ways to try and retain the best people. Ms. Fuer, thank you. Thank you for speaking up. The incident with the chair, you had sent an email earlier about that, and yes, even if it was well-intentioned, it's unacceptable, and hopefully we will have protocols now in place so that no one takes it upon themselves to come up with a solution that doesn't really meet the standards that we should have. Regarding facility shortages, this has been an ongoing problem. You know, we recognize it. We have been working very hard for months to recruit more people to fill these positions. It's difficult, you know, as it's been mentioned, that as the minimum wage went up, you know, the salary, you know, which has to be part of our negotiations, we can't just, you know, bump salaries up. So it isn't as competitive as we'd like it to be. Hopefully, we'll be able to improve that. We've extended more recruiting. Dr. Hill mentioned our adult school director, and you just, Norrie. We had a conversation a couple of weeks ago when we were at an event, and he's got some great ideas towards trying to help recruit and create a pipeline to fill those jobs. So we're not giving up. I think we do have to get even more creative. We've talked about the possibilities, at least temporarily, of using Temp Company to help fill our shortages when we can, but that, again, has to be discussed with our bargaining unit before we can do that. But we're working on it, and we will continue to work on it. And thank you to Mr. Newp. I know you said he jumped right on it, and the staff jumped right on it. We would expect nothing less, because we know that's the kind of people they are. And we won't, this isn't going to- And we won't, this isn't going to, and we're not just going to forget about it. This is going to be something we're, it's going to be a challenge that we will continue to, to fight to reconcile. Ms. Morrison, Dr. Hill mentioned the, the striping should occur either this coming Saturday or the next Saturday. The field, I, the, the 90 days thing, which we thought the clock was already started, but yes, as it turned out, there, there to be county approval about the, the potable water, I think it was. But anyways, as the, the clock has finally started, but yes, it's probably about the beginning of the next semester before we'll be able to take the fencing down. You mentioned there's a lot of small items. We are still working through punch list items. Our contractor has not, we've had some issues with them with Silver Creek. We're continuing to work through that. And we are making sure that things are getting done before anything else gets paid. But that, that should be much improved shortly. And also as far as the communication aspect of it goes, there was, during the summer, there were some emails that were being missed. It was found they were going to a spam file that were communications, Mr. Cross and he was, were, you know, because we had said, how come this wasn't happening? It should have been followed up on anyways and we've stressed that point, but you know, going forward, that should improve. But there was eventually that communication with staff regarding input on the striping to make sure it was set up the way it's, that it was being requested.
I know we don't go back and forth, but the communication I was referred to was on the website. It hasn't been updated.
Okay. And I, and the superintendent mentioned that, so it will get done. And finally, Mr. Schlossman, I am in agreement with superintendent. I, yeah, we won't get into deep discussion because it's not an agenda item, but I don't think arming teachers is the solution. It just, more guns is not the solution. More guns is what I believe has gotten us into the situation we're in now. And I, I would not be in favor of that at all if we ever brought that forward. So that's, I'll leave my comments at that. Before I move on, I want to mention a couple of things that happened in the community. First of all, last Friday evening, September 30th, was the Burbank Pride in Magnolia Park event, which I, I have to congratulate the organizing committee. Mr. Huerta is a member of, was a member of, the event is done, did a fantastic job. This was an event that was several years in planning, which, you know, due to COVID, things got delayed, but it was great seeing such a large turnout, community members supporting, just having a great time. It was a great event, a lot of fun. Everyone was smiling, dancing, a lot of, great entertainment on the, excuse me, on the stage. And I just, I look forward to the event being an annual event going forward and growing from there because it really did well. I've already messaged with Ms., with Isabel, but next time you meet and with Brian also, obviously, but just again, pass along my congratulations on just a fantastic event to, to the committee who worked so hard to get that done. And lastly, I, it was my pleasure. It was a walk, bike and roll to school today at Edison Elementary and I had a chance to participate with that. It's always my pleasure. I'm, I'm lucky enough to live across the street from Edison, so it was easy for me to move. I actually have to walk out of my way to join the, the walking path, but it's a great event and it's great to see, there's, there's actually a lot of families who are already walking to school as we're walking from the school down Chandler where the meeting spot was at Buena Vista. You're seeing so many people who are, they're already walking to school because it's what they do every day. So, and, and again, living there, I've seen that, that there, we, we do have a good amount of people who do that, but it's great to encourage more people to do it. And thank you, Mrs. Flossy, for the invitation. And, and as, as she said, she expects me to keep coming every year, even if I'm not on the board anymore, so, and I promised her I would. So I look forward to doing it again next year. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aga Khanian.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Allen, thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. So, so those of you who don't know, my colleague and I, Dr. Weisberg, were the co-founders of the Environmental Action Committee for the district with the superintendent's support and the district itself. And we actually, at the end of this month, we're, we're going to be having our meeting that's going to come up with the vision and, you know. For those of you who know me, you know, I've been talking about the gardens for a long time. And I've seen this work in LA. I've seen this work when I was at Merrimonde, teaching a class called Management for Sustainability. I'm a complex system management guy, so I think five to 10-year increments every time I talk about anything. I've seen this work and I've told people, you know, we're going to get to a point soon where we're going to have these gardens, have our students go to the farmer's market on Saturdays, partnering up with Citi, selling these products, bringing the money back, sustaining these gardens as well. And that is something that, it's going to happen. So thank you for, first of all, volunteering so much time, being at this committee, but we're almost there and I think this is something important, not only, you know, for the sustainability sake, but also I think our kiddos nowadays are much more aware of what's happening and they're concerned, they're very concerned. And what's happening now, it's very alarming. And I think these little gardens can change. The community can change the mindset of some individuals who don't believe in what's happening out there. But I think more important also, it brings communities together. I've seen what they do in, especially in some low-income communities where the garden becomes the center, where you come and talk to the like-minded individuals. So I'm all for it and I want to see this happen and grow. So, and this is a discussion we're going to have, the Environmental Action Committee moving forward. Ms. Rowley left, so again, thank you for talking about that as well. And all the students who came forward and give such a great, you know, speeches and, you know, very informative. Also, Ms. Fur, right, thank you very much. You know, as a parent of a 10-year-old, yeah, the last thing I want is my son to sit on a chair that might collapse, you know? But I, there has to be a protocol and I do agree with you and I think the fact that you come forward and take time out of your busy schedule to talk to us, it matters. So thank you very much. And also, Ms. Morrison, thank you. I love that T-shirt, by the way, I think like an Adam, so. But again, same thing, you know, one thing that people don't talk about and, you know, me, being at my work, being a director in a higher ed system is also there is a shortage of even people in the county and state level who are processing these applications. It's taking longer. I give you a simple example. I had, we had to wait eight months to get reimbursements from the state for one of the programs that I oversee. We're talking $680,000 worth of money that they didn't have the staff at the state level to process the reimbursements. So think about that. If you're an institution that relies on reimbursements for programs, you literally have to have $600,000 sitting, you know, in your account just to fill in. There is a big shortage of workers in every level. And I think recently you saw what happened in, even with LA Unified, there is an exodus of teachers, so bad that, you know, people are now offering programs, the federal government is coming in trying to, even changing the system. There's talks about dual immersion with universities and colleges now where you can go in, if you can't get into university right away, you can go to the college system and vice versa. It's kind of interesting what's happening out there. But it is a concern of everyone. And I think, as my colleague said, you know, we, we do work very hard. We didn't give up after what happened with measure I. But I will always go back to my argument, you know, us, you know, advocating for more dollars. The issue again, part of the problem with Burbank is also us being almost a perfect middle class. You know, we don't have the low-income level, nor do we have the higher, where some districts, I won't mention them, they literally balance their budget through the donations from the foundation of, of the district itself. So Burbank is an interesting case study and I've said this before and I say it again, I think the conversation has to be bigger about how we change the whole system itself and how we get funded, or else we will have these conversations over and over again. And part of it has to do with, you know, what happened with Proposition 13 and, you know, where the revenues are no longer coming like they used to. And, but I think this is a bigger conversation, but I do encourage all of you to have these conversations with your elected officials. This was the most prosperous year in a long time in history of California. There was so much surplus, yet, you know, again, you saw certain items being earmarked at certain areas and certain districts. And I think we've done a good job advocating our elected officials for support, but I think we need more. It's one thing to say, well, we need this and go find the money. It's another thing to become an advocate and ask for that money. And these individuals have powers. Our senator is the chair of the State Appropriation Committee. He's the one who decides where the funds go. So I think the conversation has to continue. Fortunately, we have a very good working relationship with all of them and they've been listening to our concerns. But at the same time, I think this is something that we need the input of the community. This has to be consistent. The key here is sustainability, consistently addressing these issues. And in closing, I did also attend the, what was it called? Pride in Burbank Pride and, and we took our 10-year-old with us and there was unfortunate the group, you know, they have the right, but they were using a lot of profanity, yelling across the street, yes. And I love, you know, what our 10-year-olds think. He said, why are these individuals so angry, you know? And I said, I don't know, but, but it was a wonderful event, very informative, fun and there was a lot of great food and I am looking forward to the next one. And I think that was a great reflection of how diverse Burbank has become. And it was beautiful and I, I was very happy to see some of my friends and colleagues there, you know? But again, I think sometimes we need to start thinking like a 10-year-old, right? And remember that we're all humans and we should treat each other equally. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Aga Khanian. Dr. Weisberg?
Thank you, thank you. Echoing everybody, Burbank Pride was awesome. I think my favorite thing was seeing so many BUSD students there, especially from boroughs. That was probably the best part of the night. Tons of fun, can't wait for the next one. Really glad I got a chance to attend. I'm going to try to go fast. To Ms. Rowley, it's really impressive how, I know you're not here, I'm just going to talk to you like you are, how you always go so above and beyond everything, even in the middle of a lot of frustrations, which you've clearly experienced. I want to apologize that you've not received the kind of response that you should have from facilities. Ms. Tabit has let me know that she's going to share some of the updates that, that she gets from the facilities subcommittee. I think part of the problem is, you know, it's not even a problem, but like not knowing sort of the ins and outs, it'll be really helpful to know what's going on so we can figure out as board members how to better advocate for this. But it's clear that, you know, even beyond the, you know, our, our needing more custodial services and all of the, the personnel challenges, but there also needs to be better communication, more consistent and quicker communication so that people are at least getting responses from facilities when, when they email. So I feel like that's a, the good news is that should be an easy problem to fix and it doesn't cost us money to respond quickly to requests and concerns. To some of our students, to Elijah and to Jocelyn specifically, you are a great example of what student leadership is. Elijah, you mentioned that you hope that you can lead in the future. You're already leading. Getting up here tonight with such a powerful speech shows your friends and other people in other schools that you can advocate for things you really, really care about. You can do hard things and it was wonderful to see you here. And Jocelyn, I also think something you mentioned, it's a great opportunity for student leaders like you to mentor younger students so that they can take over the reins as you move through BUSD and you get older and, and move up to high school. So thank you both for getting here on a school night and speaking so powerfully. To Ms. Maggi, thank you. I hear you and what you're saying about your feeling as though there's a lack of transparency about our principal moving forward. I'm hoping it's possible, maybe we can just send some more sort of like step-by-step, here's where we are in the process emails to keep all of the parents updated, even if we don't have anything particularly new to report, just so you feel like you're part of the process, because I know there's a process in place. And thanks to Dr. Anders for stepping up and doing 12,000 things that aren't in his job description, including this. You bring up a really interesting question and if, I'm looking at my computer because as people talk, I take notes, I'm not doing other work because I cannot remember all the good things people say, but you ask a great question about how we're retaining our principals. It's challenging for all the reasons that everybody has already said, but I also think something that we need to spend more time on is we know that people stay in Burbank unified for the sense of community and connectivity because it's certainly not, you know, for the pay. So, which is for reasons that Dr. Aga Khanian mentioned, among other things. So what are we doing to make sure that the morale is high and that people feel like being part of this community is worth it? I think we need to spend some time talking about that because we can hire all the people we want, but if people don't feel like this is a place they want to be, they're going to leave. So I think that's something that we need to spend some time talking about. What can we do in those areas in both big and small ways to make people feel as appreciated as we truly appreciate them, because we do and we're clearly falling short. So I want to spend some time thinking about that, what we can do in sort of the intangible ways to make people feel as important as they are. I would also will love, I'll reach out to you to connect. So Ms. Fur, I'm sure this was not an easy thing to do and also both time and expressing frustration, you know, as a classroom teacher, when my room is not clean, it is really difficult for me and really difficult for my students. So I, I absolutely, I mean, I think we all understand, I don't think you have to be a teacher to understand being in a space that isn't clean is not conducive to learning for you or your learners. It's clear we're not taking care of your space in the way that we should and in, in so doing, we're not taking care of you and your kids in the way that we should. So I'm looking forward to getting more updates on how facilities is responding to your concerns because they need to be responded to and I hope you'll reach out to the board members too, if something isn't happening, so we can help move that forward for you. I think you have our emails or can yell really loud and we'll just like flap down from where we're sleeping. But, but thank you. Ms. Allen, clearly you're a rock star. Thank you for the 12,000 things you mentioned that you do. I, I really, I hadn't thought about it in that way and I'm looking forward to talking to Dr. Hill more about the idea of having the gardens underneath the umbrella of Sustainability Committee because you hit the nail on the head. The biggest issue is it can't be facilities responsibility and people graduate, kids move on and parents move on. So what can we do to make sure that these gardens continue? And I think that's, that's not something I had thought about, so I really appreciate that perspective. Ms. Morrison, hello. Thank you. I know Dr. Hill addressed all those specific concerns and I, I think, I'm sure that the board will get an update on progress at Disney and, you know, how things are moving along and I'm sure you'll tell us as well, which is nice, so we get informal, informal. I, I think your points though, like little things are big, the, the little things like paper towels, that those aren't so little. So making sure that we see those things and not just the big picture is also a really helpful reminder, as is the communication reminder. Big eyes, I know, I'm with you. So thank you for continuing to bring it to our attention. It really is important. Mr. Schlossman? I assume that you would comment about me rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. I did that today because our student leaders were leading the pledge and I hadn't, obviously had an opportunity to talk to them about my decision not to rise for the pledge. But as a history teacher, and I've said this to you before, but I think it's But as a history teacher, and I've said this to you before, but I think it's important because we have students here and students watching, there's no better example of civics than making a decision to not engage in the pledge or in any other form of an act of patriotism. Patriotism is empty unless it has meaning. And you've never asked me why I haven't stood. I'm glad to tell you at any moment, I'm not going to do it now for the sake of time, but there are myriad reasons and they're meaningful and important to me. I think it is a sign of great patriotism and great love for my country that I choose to sit when I do because when I stand, I mean it. Again, the James Baldwin quote, "I love America more than any other country in the world and exactly for this reason I insist on the right to criticize her perpetually. I don't need your approval to sit, nor do I need it to stand. And I hope that my actions show students every day that to actively engage in their country means to protest in moments and to celebrate in others." I would also ask you to think about how you refer to other groups of people not as blacks, but as black men and women or black people. The last thing I'll say, I know, it's a giggle fest. The last thing I'll say is that, and I'm happy to send you, and don't, she has every right to respond, sir. Happy to send you, not sure you're interested, but a metric ton of research and data that Dr. Hill alluded to that shows that arming teachers does nothing to stave off violent incidents. In fact, it does the opposite. And just as I have spoken many times about how problematic it is that we ask our police to be mental health workers and social workers, so too do I have a problem with asking educators to have a gun. It, I mean, as a, as a teacher myself, it's, it's a bad idea for myriad reasons, the least of which is, is that the research doesn't support it. So the fatalistic idea that you have, which is that these things are going to keep happening, we know what will change them, stronger gun control laws. We know that there are things that we can be doing in this country to prevent it. That's one of the reasons that I choose to sit is post-Uvalde, when nothing changed in this country, sent a message to me that our students and our teachers and our staff in our schools are not respected or cared for. So that's what needs to happen, not giving our teachers who are doing the job of 12 million firearms and asking them to protect children, which they're already doing. So I understand a lot of you coming up here is because of the attention and you want the responses and the reactions. And I often, I struggle within myself to give you any of that because I know that's how your power bars increase. But I can't let certain things go. And I want to let our teachers know to, to echo Dr. Hill, this is not something we're thinking about. This is not something we will ever think about. The decisions we make are grounded in research fact. And those things let us know that changing the law is what keep, will keep our students safer, not putting more firearms on our campuses.
Are we?
Hold on, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I just wanted, I didn't know if you were looking something, okay. All right. Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. I appreciate you coming down. A couple of things, where, where did I want to start? So many things I want to say to, to Ms. Allen, thank you. Over here, right? Yes, okay. When I said your name and looked at you, you looked that way and I thought, oh, I got the wrong woman. Okay. You know, I, you have brought a completely different pers- perspective to gardens for me. I've never been a really big proponent of gardens for several reasons, which I can share with you privately. But the big one was because of people moving on and leaving. And then we would be, we, meaning the district and facilities, would be left with this overgrowth that brought extra critters and whatever else. You are the first person that's come and said, no, we have this group, we can sustain it. We will, and you had a plan. So I really like it that here's our problem, here's our plan. Thank you for that. So I'm behind you because there's a plan. So I, I hope we can make this work. Ms. Fier, thank you for coming out. You know, what I, Dr. Weisberg was talking about gun control and her advocacy for it and the things that happen in, in school shootings and why isn't there any change? I kind of see, this is a strange thing, but we had, we had an issue where a well-intentioned person tried to make repairs to desks and it just didn't work out. But yet, we had some facility members who within that day were there and they fixed them correctly. And now there's a plan in process. And I think that's the kind of thing, and I'm so sorry it happened to you, but that's the kind of thing that you shine a light on and we go, oh, we had a problem, let's fix it. So I'm, that was a large topic of our conversation at the Facilities Subcommittee on Monday morning. It was touched upon a little bit on Wednesday at another meeting that we have for Facilities. So I think, thank you for bringing this forward. And now we have a way, a pathway to grow even more because we know there's an issue. We know it. So I hope thankfully that child wasn't harmed, probably scared to death, but, what's that?
She had just a bump on the back of her head.
Oh, good, okay, good. And we hope no more children are injured and we get this taken care of. I know that through, through the committee, we've been talking and working a lot. Mr. Fritner spoke of it, about how to get more people in. And I think there's some good plans ahead, so we'll watch carefully and see what happens. I do know you have a new custodian at your school that I think is fabulous. And you're going to, if you haven't met her yet, you're going to love her. And she will whip that place into shape right away. I know she will because anytime I've seen her, she's, she's just, I think, I think with our facilities folks especially, our teachers too, I, it's hard. No matter what I say, someone's going to call up and say, you didn't say this. And it's not my intention to leave anybody out. But I think a lot of our employees are very, very, they have a strong bond with our, our community and our district or the school site they work for. They love our school, their school sites they work for or the district. And they put a lot of effort and energy into what they do, all of you. So I am appreciative of that because it just means we're able to offer a better opportunity for our student learners. So I, I appreciate that. And there's going to be, there's going to be a lot more employees coming through the next few months. You, you will see. If not, you come find me, we'll figure the next step out. My computer went off and now I can't find my list. Give me two seconds. There we go. Ms. Morrison, same thing. On those committee meetings that we specifically talk about Disney, there were some issues with, it's, it's a difficult thing because it's bond funds versus district funds. And so the company that we used, I've seen it happen before, not with the same company, but with other companies. It gets to the end and that punchless happens and all of a sudden, everything slows way down. There's, we can't just always send a district employee in a bond building, a bond-funded project to take care of things. So, but I think we're getting to the point now that we have to, we have to get that building, all the little stuff finished for the safety and good of our learners. And so it, that's coming to a head. And I think there's going to be some activity in the next couple of weeks that you'll see things happen. Not the grass, that will take a little bit more time. But yeah, I think, I think, well, there were so many hoops to jump forward to get that grass going that it wasn't as simple. The, the painting on the, on the, the striping on the playground, come on. That should have been done a long time ago and ready for those kids. I get where the ground has to cure and, and settle, but we're past that time. So it's, it's really time to get moving on that. And besides, I would like to have a grand, you know, ribbon cutting soon. I don't want, I don't want to wait till January. I want to show the community the wonderful building that we put in there and all the, I mean, I, little things, the light switches that dim the lights, the, the air conditioning system that adjusts to body temperature inside the room. As more kids come in, it gets a little cooler. I mean, it's, it's fun stuff, so I want to show that off. And hopefully we will very soon. Let's see, if I, if I don't speak about whatever you, you brought to us, it doesn't mean I'm not interested or that I agree or disagree. I just hit the big ones for sake of time. So thank you again, everyone for coming down. I do want to share and wonder if we could put this on our website. Each one of our student board members tonight talked about, we talked about FAFSA and all the meetings that are coming up where you could get information. Senator Portantino has a, a free workshop webinar that if parents can't attend something, but they could view it online, it's October 11th at 6:00 PM. And I can forward you the, the email, but that might be nice as another option for people. You, you have to fill out those FAFSA forms, just, just do it. No matter even if your plan, whatever your plan currently is, if it doesn't involve college, might as well do it anyway because it might change your mind. You fill that form out, community college is free. That's an awesome option, so let's take advantage of that. Okay, we have a public hearing that we should do first, if we could. So I have to gavel in the public hearing in the matter of determining sufficiency of pupil textbooks and instructional materials for 2022, 2023. A public, public hearing will be held consistent with the provisions of Education Code 60119, sufficiency of public textbook and instructional materials for the 2022, 2023 school year. The purpose of this hearing is to adopt a resolution and to provide parents, teachers, students, members of the community and bargaining unit leaders with an opportunity to comment regarding insufficient textbooks or instructional materials or both for pupils enrolled in the Burbank schools, including English learners in each of the following subjects that are aligned to the academic context standards and consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum framework adopted by the State Board of Education. So history, social science, mathematics, English language arts, including English language development component of an adopted program, science, health, foreign language and science lab equipment for courses offered in grades nine through 12. All interested in reviewing such information should contact Peter Knappich, Director Elementary Education at 818-729-4451. Anyone wish to comment on public hearing? So. Where'd everybody go? What did I say?
You said public hearing.
All right, it's now closed. And we can move back in the agenda. And we will go to 11, Reports to the Board. Is that what you're all waiting for? All right, BUSD Math Collaborative with California Education Partners.
Thank you. Good evening, President Tabit, members of the board and the Burbank community. We're excited to present to you tonight the Algebra Project. And first, Dr. Paramo is going to introduce our team and then I'll give a little bit of a brief background.
So I'd like to start by introducing our very proud principal of Emerson Elementary, Mrs. Jen Almer. We also have from our district office, Dr. Robin Anders. And we have our math guru from John Burrows High School, Mr. Greg Everhart. And another math guru from John Muir Middle School, and it is Corey Howard.
So one of the best parts of our jobs, you know, Dr. Paramo's and mine is really working with instruction. We love that part. But in this case, it was really about providing the space for our teachers to do amazing and innovative work. And in fact, the collaborative who started this whole thing deliberately wanted district office people to be there so they could remove barriers for teachers. So this was a really great thing. So in 2017, the California Ed Partners contacted the superintendent and asked him if Burbank would like to participate in a new statewide initiative to really look at college going rates and to try to improve them. So we of course accepted and the result was our Algebra Project. And we're going to be speaking to all of the things that happened along the way and we have amazing results for you and a video to highlight our work. We can start with that.
The collaborative is a really good opportunity to get away from the site and work with district partners and partners outside that will push you on helping students learn.
Ultimately, I feel like school is such a metaphor for what real life is going to be like. And real life is always about doing something, failing, trying again, mastering it.
We really do have students who come in with math trauma where they feel like they can't learn or they can't grow because we got to get these students back to believing they could do it before they can actually do it.
Instead, we start on a positive note by talking about the beauty of math and how important it is to make mistakes. It's actually more important than getting the answer correct every time, is to get the answer wrong and figure out why it was wrong.
It's different because now we just want them to learn, which was always also the case. Sometimes now students, for example, say, can I just get some worksheets to get my grade up? And that's not what it's about. I can't give you stuff to fluff up your grade. It's about, do you understand it?
It allowed me to like thrive in math without feeling like I'm doing this wrong. This is the way I learn and now I know that it's different than someone else and it's not the wrong way, but it's my way.
And I think the great thing about the Algebra Project is it really hones in on a specific objective. Like the objective is, can you solve this equation? The objective is not, can you work with this fraction? And so kind of removing those barriers has been helpful and allows students to see, yes, you can do the algebra. Maybe there's some other things that also need to be worked on, but the algebra part, the part that I'm giving you a grade for, the part that you are trying to show mastery, you can do it.
I was always like, had bad grades in math and I just never was good at it. But this year, I'm doing really good. Previous years, like the homework, I had to go home and like, most of the time, I wouldn't understand it. So it was just really hard for me because then I was stressed out about turning it in the next day.
Classwork and homework, it's not part of their grade, still assigned. We still give feedback, but those are the time to make the mistakes and learn from the mistakes. So their grade is solely based on their objectives.
I mean, it's more fun. It's more like a different way to learn. Because in middle school, you had to do homework. You had to finish before class. You know, they were more strict about work. But Algebra I, my teacher, this whole class thing, this math class, it's just, you have more freedom.
I'm hopeful that when the Algebra Project is, I guess, done its official capacity, that we continue on and we continue to find time to collaborate and to expand this beyond just Algebra I, but to our other subjects like Geometry, Algebra II, Precalculus. And then also be able to bring this to our middle school, our other secondary schools and grow it from the ground up instead of just starting at Algebra I. I hope that it continues to expand and that we can continue to collaborate.
I will continue doing this because I see it. I see the difference it makes and the importance it is for students to just have that feeling of, I could do this.
Okay, so Jennifer Almer is going to share about the beginnings with you.
Hi, everyone. So I was part of the very first group before we knew what this was really about. And so we went through a lot of different thoughts and thinking and what we were going to do. And I was a TOSA at the time at the district office and also super passionate about math education. And so I, I offered to take it on, it was very exciting. And the first steps were just getting people who might be interested and showing some data about how we were not moving in the direction that we wanted to move. And so we had discussions around standards and things were already happening at Burrows and Burbank High around collaboration. And so there was like a, a little nugget within. And so, there was like a, a little nugget within all of them that was like, yeah, we've got to do something different. And so, some of the exciting things that happened in that very early part of the years, we developed a K-12 collaborative that went to the California Math Conference, that did some work around Joe Bowler's work with mathematical mindsets. We got both Burrows and Burbank High algebra teachers in the same room at the same time, which was the first time that had been done. And we decided, we, we got more and more specific about what we wanted and needed to work on, and really use the, the tenants of improvement science and PDSA cycles to start to understand what we wanted to even try. And so, that, those were the beginning years. We decided to work with Algebra I specifically, because, sorry. Yes. Okay. So, we decided to focus on Algebra I specifically, because we were looking at our A through G rates, and looking at the equity of, in amongst our student populations about A through G rates, and realizing that Algebra I is really the gatekeeper to meeting A through G rates, because they need to have Algebra II, to be able to be college-ready. And so, we also saw discrepancies within our subgroups, and we started to hone in on a focus of Latinx students. And we did a pretty amazing job, I think, as a team who was facilitating teachers, of bringing teachers together and saying, ah, what do you guys want to, what do you want to try? What do you want to? So, we have this throwing spaghetti at the wall. And one of the first things that we tried around a math mindset survey, which we'll share in a moment, was taking Joe Bowler's online courses together during the summer. There were some really positive things about the pandemic, and one of them was the ability for a lot of people to collaborate together across sites. Based on that work, the Algebra I team decided to put together a Unit Zero, which was all based on building mathematical mindsets and, and boosting kids' ideas about math and themselves. And so, we did surveys throughout that entire time of how the kids felt about themselves in mathematics, and how they felt about mathematics in school. And so, there's lots of awesome data there, but, but this highlights one of those ideas that was highlighted in the video, that when we gave this survey to all of our math students district-wide in 2018, kids really didn't feel like learning was the objective, that the most important thing was, was sort of getting the grade, getting the points, and about one test, one final. And as you can see, as we move into 2020, our Algebra I students, that's clearly not the case. That blue represents that they strongly agree with the idea that it is about their growth and improvement and learning over just a test.
So, I wanted to share this graphic, because it was created by the team, one of the team members, and they do such cute graphics. Oh, sorry. Mine are a little more boring and just data. But the key observations that they found was, this was pretty consistent results across subgroups. So, even though we honed in on Latinx students, we were seeing a lot of benefit to all of our students. There's a decrease in DNF percentage for all students. But also, just within the subgroup of Hispanic students, it was kind of across the board where we were seeing a lot more consistency for them as a demographic. CASP scores, still, still kind of waiting to see official results to come out, but you can see the trend over the last couple of years of the DNF rate. And then, the next slide validates that even more so. So, this is tracking our DNF rates. Fall semester is a little lower than spring, and that's kind of a traditional progression, not just in math, but in all classes, but specifically in math, even more so. Which is, yeah. Yeah. So, the orange is the fall, and then the blue is the spring semester. And that's, and like I was saying, it's a little higher in the spring for each school year, but you can see the overall trend, either fall or spring, as we progress through the years, has gone down. 19 and 20, 1920, the spring semester of that year, we didn't have grades. It was just the pass fail, so that, we don't have a data point for that. But very obvious downward slope on, on this trend, which was our goal. Because this is getting students through that A through G and college-ready. I do have to say, this is the, the metric that we use when we meet with the math collaborative, and we are a very popular group with all the other districts that participate, because they see how impressive our trend is, and they want to know what we're doing in Burbank Unified. The next slide is all students. So, this is not just our metric of, of our Latinx students. This is all students, and this is even historical data. So, this is fall and spring combined. That's why you're going to see high numbers, is this is for the whole year, post semesters. But it's really impressive, the ground that we've covered, especially when you go back to those first couple of years, before we started this work, you know, and where, when we, even when we started and started having these conversations, we saw a decline, but it's continued to decrease from there. Again, that odd, odd year is 1920, because of the spring semester. But we've almost, you know, back from, from 2012, we've dropped by what, 150%? Or, you know, a third of the, the DNFs that we used to have. So, really impressive work for our group. And I want to introduce Greg Everhart. So, I went through some of the, the hard data, and he's going to talk about some of the qualitative aspects of the work at the site.
Hi, everyone. So, yeah, obviously, it's not so easy to see the, the results about what I'm about to talk about, but I can speak, because I was there. I witnessed the process. And so, like, you have a bunch of math teachers, and they're mathematicians, so you get them all in a room, and they talk, and they can problem solve. Like, you just have to get them in the room, right? But it's not just getting them in the room. It's like having the trust of the people behind me to making sure that throwing spaghetti at the wall is okay. It's okay to fail. And so, like, the growth mindset is on like multiple levels here. The growth mindset of the district office, allowing us teachers to try things, us teachers instilling that into our students, and then the students believing in that cause as well. And so, when we are able to collaborate over the pandemic, we didn't have students on Friday. And so, every Algebra I teacher at Burrows, and every Algebra I teacher at Burbank High, we met for an hour every Friday. And so, so much of this work came from that. We built a full curriculum that included that Unit Zero we were talking about, and overall, just built a community that never existed before. We were always just separate high schools, and like, we looked at data, but then we never had time to talk about that data, talk about best practices or anything else. And so, from that, from those Friday collaborations, we were able to focus on what do we really want students to know? What was the most essential thing? Only seeing the kids two days a week, we were forced to make sure we focused on just those things that we called promise standards. And from that, we had to talk about, well, how are we going to know if they know it or not? So, the process of creating formative assessments that we could all do together, that discussion allowed us to break down those barriers that we used to have, and be vulnerable with each other, and admit some places where we needed to improve, and be able to be together during that time of the pandemic. And so, from that, from those, from those discussions on formative assessments, other things naturally, organically came from that. We started talking about focusing on mastery, and not just making sure that the students do all of the tasks you tell them to do, because they could complete all those tasks and still not know the material, right? So, making sure that we focused our grading systems on mastery. And so, that brought up the conversation of rubric rating. And so, we were starting all of these small PDSA cycles that weren't really necessarily any part of our goal at the beginning, but they came just because we were in there and collaborating. So, those are some things that we know worked for sure. And so, these are the things that we made conclusions so far from the Algebra Project, is we know that increased teaching collaboration causes us to come up with ideas outside of the box and just make sure that we can implement them. And then, also increases the, the concept of that growth mindset in classroom. We know that if we talk and become the best teachers we can possibly be, we also can be most impactful for our students, and our students will learn more. And that seems so logical, but it just had never happened before. And then, of course, improving that mindset and keeping that going. So, kind of our process for what we're doing now, this year. It's actually two slides. So, the concept of scaling. So, this is our, our final year with CalEd Partners. And so, we, we don't want to lose the focus and all the momentum that you saw from that data with Algebra I. So, we want the Algebra I to focus inward on the grading rubric, and try to calibrate the rubric to make sure that everyone's on the same page, while at the same time, scaling outward with our other subjects, like our Algebra II, our geometry, to see if the same things that we're working with Algebra I can be replicated in those other classrooms, as well as expanding further to, of course, the middle schools. And we have our middle school guru, guru behind me, so I'm going to pass off to my colleague and friend, Corey Howard. We're just really excited, because all the heavy lifting's already been done. It's so nice to have everyone doing all the hard work right behind us, so us at middle school can just benefit, truly. So, just to put it lightly, we know that the math mindset really shifted understanding of how to teach math. So, we're starting right away with a math mindset survey at the middle school level as well. In addition to that, we have PLCs that meet three times a semester, and they're really groups of three or four teachers, who are all working together to culture build and around a problem of practice. So, it's figuring out, how do we collaborate together? And how do we find the joy in that collaboration? And coming out of the pandemic, we're finding that teachers are regaining their joy of teaching through this space. And I think that's something that's a really healthy byproduct as well. Beyond that, we're, we're working on kind of aligning our curriculum and making sure that we have those promise standards that were so successful at the high school level. With our half-day collaboration day, that's really what our site is working on. And beyond that, we're trying to develop those cognitive formative assessments. We're being encouraged to move slow and really culture build. We know that this takes time. So, that's also something that's been really helpful as well in building that joy at the middle school level, is knowing, you know what? Even just participating in the collaboration is the work we need to be done. It's really taking the pressure off as well. So, that's the middle school report.
And bringing it back around to elementary, we do have a collaborative started for TK through three in math with the same CalEd Partners. And having learned all of this through this process with PDSA cycles, of course, we're bringing it into our schools as well, through something called Counting Collections. And at our site, we're doing affinity groups around innovative instruction, and so, teachers are taking this on. And if you want to see pictures, I have a lot of them. But really cool things happening in elementary, too, to support all of this work as well.
Wow. Go ahead, Dr. Weisberg.
So, as someone who still suffers from math trauma, this is unbelievable. My biggest question is, in regards to how do we continue to support this when the partnership ends? Because, I mean, the data shows it's working. It's really exciting. I mean, I want to say a big thank you, because I cannot imagine the amount of work that went into this. I mean, you're, you're all talking about it so like casually and succinctly, but I can't even begin to imagine. So, I'm wondering, as, you know, just as a board member, how can, what, what should we be thinking about to support this after, like, the partnership ends, moving forward? Because I would assume everybody wants this to continue to grow and expand.
I'll start and let the team jump in. The main reason I was excited about this when CalEd Partners came to us was it was giving us the tools and the mindset to continue this work. So, as you heard, PDSA, Plan, Do, Study, Act, is a plan, a decision science, scientific improvement approach that we do. And by talking about how to do collaboration and modeling it with algebra at the high school level, you already heard how easy it is to the middle school level. And you start talking about, we can take our time. We can take our existing systems and structures in the district and apply this mindset to that. I'll let the team talk about it, but we, we do need to continue to look at, how do we build in collaboration time, release time, opportunities to bring in experts? So, that, that will be some funding asks that we need to do going forward. But that network of CalEd Partners is there. We've already started working on the PK through three, and so, we're going to have a next cohort go through that. And the goal is to bring it back into all of our schools and spread it. But I'll let the team talk more about the approach.
I was just going to say that a couple of weeks ago, we met with the collaborative up in the Castaways, and we spoke about it, and we spoke about the work and the work moving forward. And while we're really proud of our Algebra I data and where we've come over the last several years, we're also recognizing other data, like geometry data, which has become our new old algebra data, where that's where we're seeing the most trouble, right? So, we're talking about the success we've had with this, and how we move that forward into algebra, and then algebra two, sorry, geometry, and then Algebra II, and then hopefully, to other disciplines. You know, the focus of the work and the impetus of the work was obviously the kids and their performance in math. And that's still the goal. But for someone who has worked with Sharon and, and principals, to have the discussion with teachers about their own mindset is also something I'm very proud of, because that is a tough conversation. When I was a principal at Burrows, I worked really hard to try to have this conversation. And it doesn't always go well, right? Because the teachers want to have autonomy over their grading. But one of the things that I see that's come from this project is teachers, math teachers questioning, what does the grade mean? What does it mean? When we put a grade on the report card, what does the grade mean? What is it supposed to mean? You can't have those kinds of discussions without starting to think about your own practice in grading. And so, those are deeper conversations, and they really are powerful. They are really, really powerful in terms of how we're assessing our kids and how we're getting kids to meet A through G. So, I think that while we're seeing a growth mindset with our students, we're also seeing it with our teachers. And I'm hoping our math teachers can make it a contagion that goes out to all other disciplines as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes. So, you know, I hear the word "mat," and I get really excited and happy. My question to you is, because, you know, there's been a lot of issues with students graduating from high school and going into college and not being ready when it comes to mathematics. And, but also this new, well, not new, but much more aggressive conversation about future jobs and the importance of mathematics. I mean, statistics, you know, probabilities, logistics, 3PL, where, I mean, this is where the future is, right? Sigma Six certification and all that fun stuff. I love what you've been doing, because, you know, I always hear people saying, well, my child is not good in mathematics. And my answer is, no one is. It requires practice, you know? Practice, practice, right? But also, understanding it, right? The moment when you see, it's like the Matrix, right? When you see it. My question to you is, like, where are we when it comes to encouraging? And by encouraging, I say that I'm seeing more students now studying engineering, like, my first passion, environmental engineering, a lot of calculus, right? My question is, where are, I'm seeing a lot of students now talking about engineering, you know, talking about, you know, going into the fields of mathematics. Where, where are we when it comes to saying, well, if you do this, these are the jobs, for example, that you will be prepared for? And looking at the market, saying, this is where everything lies now, right? Looking at the Amazons, and looking at the global markets, and what's really needed out there. Is there any talks of transitioning what you're doing, which is fantastic? I love it. But, and talking about the future jobs, or when you graduate high school, this is where you should be focusing if you want to be working in certain markets, you know? Especially what's out there, right? Now, I always tell people, eventually, all of us are going to somehow end up working for Amazon, whether we like it or not, you know? But, but they are investing very heavily in IT, in technology, in warehousing, and a lot of mathematics probabilities, and, you know? Not probability so much, but statistics, right? So, are we having those conversations within this, or?
So, that is really an interest of our state. So, there's a big push that way. We have two engineering academies, one at each high school, and that is part of the Career Technical Education Program, is to take kids out to visit workplaces and educate them about the job opportunities. But in terms of the state, you know, they have a new framework, which they are still revising, but has a whole emphasis on data science, because as you said, that is much more of what is necessary in the job market, not necessarily Algebra II. That's really a door to go for. That's really a door to go further into other areas. And so I know, um, I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit, Mr. Everhart? Because they, um, are actually looking into trying to offer that in the near future.
Uh, yeah, my, my counterpart at Burbank High, Robert Hamel, um, he, yes, he's the best. Um, he is very interested in the data science and he is an AP statistics teacher currently at Burbank High. And so he wants to bring statistics into every class, um, no matter what the, the label is on the class. And, um, there is an actual data science class that we've been looking into. We're trying to get it approved to make sure that's an offering in the future. Um, it is currently, uh, we, we've discussed, I think the, the placement of that does make sense after Algebra II. So all this work we're doing leads directly into that. Um, also at, um, at Burbank High, they have a, a one semester statistics, statistics course that we don't currently offer at Burrows. We tried to get it back last year, but there weren't enough kids who signed up for it. It was too late. So we want to make sure we spread that word because as you mentioned, statistics is the wave of the future. Um, and those that are, uh, interested in engineering, like you said, um, they'll still, they'll still have the calculus route as well. So trying to give the students after Algebra II as many options as possible, so that whatever their passions are, they have an avenue to explore that.
So just out of curiosity, do you have your finger on the pulse? Are you seeing more interest now? Cause there was a time where students just mathematics wasn't in there. I mean, I can see it in higher ed, there is more. Are you seeing that now in middle or high school or even more interest toward mathematics and what the future holds? Sense it or I'm, I'm not looking for data.
I, I would say from my sense, from my class, that it's been the same as it always is. Um, unfortunately, we still do get all of those kids and actually more with their parents who said, oh, I wasn't a math person, so it's okay. If you don't know math, we'll just get through it. And unfortunately, that's the wrong message to send, right? Um, the message that we send with our mathematical mindset or that unit zero is that everyone can learn math. It is proven that your brain can do it. It's just you having the willpower to push through and persevere and be willing to make mistakes and learn from those. And that's how we grow and hopefully see the beauty that mathematics brings. And from there, then the structure comes and then the, the real fun stuff comes, right? Like the calculus and stuff. But I would say it's, it's approximately the same. We're hoping to grow it as always. That's job, job security.
I mean, look, I'm going to come take your class after this.
I'm just, Mrs. Casao, no offense. Son of a teacher, son of a teacher, Robert Hamel, son of a teacher.
Daughter of a teacher.
Daughter of a teacher. Thank you.
My grandparents were teachers too, in this district.
Yes, you're, you're third generation here now. Okay. Are we looking at, I, I don't know if NAF covers a teacher academy with the shortage that we have. Our amazing, I mean, to be able to, I, I mean, we all know as a principal, some of the hardest classes to fill are your math classes, to find qualified teachers to teach math. Is that something else that we're possibly looking at?
Um, it's something we're interested in. We are not actively pursuing it because we don't have any funds to support it. So even though we have one-time money, this would be an ongoing program which requires ongoing money. So.
Add that to my list when I.
As you remember, we contracted our program and so we're maintaining what we have. But yes, we're very interested in a teaching pathway.
There are 600,000 unfilled teaching jobs across the United States.
Yes.
Could, could I ask?
Feels like they're all here.
Right here.
No, all in Burbank. Um, I think it could be helpful to Dr. Promospon, your point about a funding ask. If we could, as we start to consider budget priorities moving forward, if there could be like a wish list that we can look at. So what are the things you would need money for? You know, it, I know, I don't mean everywhere, just specifically for this right now. But, you know, like talking about different things that you'd want to expand, what, what would you need so that as we're considering funding priorities, it gives us specific things to look at? That, for me, that would be really helpful.
Right. So specifically for this, it would be teachers and space and materials and textbooks and the whole shebang. So.
Just wanted to add one more thing here.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to point out to, uh, respond to Dr. Aga Khanian's questions. You know, uh, pre-pandemic, we had professors from, um, Cal State Northridge, math professors come and do an in-service with our counselors about math degrees and what jobs there were. Uh, because it's more than just being a math teacher, not that there's anything wrong with being a math teacher, but counseling the counselor so that they can.
There's three behind you, right?
I know. They're friends though. Uh, but you know, just so that counselors can guide kids, if they're interested in math and really good in math, there's a lot of avenues for them. And so we have taken that into consideration so that the, the students can get the correct guidance.
You know, and I think that's important because you run into, I run into a few students who after graduation or when they get to college realize that their fear of math is gone. They're actually fairly good at it. They get it. But for whatever reason, prior to that, it just didn't gel for them. And I see you taking that away, which to me opens up a, a hundred more doors for that student to make, you know, to have more choices to make. And, uh, and I think then they get to decide that, you know, decide whether they're good at something or not. Sometimes it just takes some extra effort.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the best football player in, in the country doesn't wake up one day being the best football player in the country. It takes effort. And so I see that this team and this program is providing that to make it eas- easier for the student to be who they really are. Is that a good perception of it? And I'm, thank you. I think that's awesome.
And, and I'm just out of curiosity, again, like in my field, there's always shortage of math teachers. And is this the same thing when it comes to, um, you know, K to 12? Cause I always see it, right? And I always, right, Sarah? Yes. So I'm, I'm, and that's also like a career path, right? Hey, like my, I teach a business class. My student asked me, I said, go study accounting. You'll always have a job, right? You know, but it's same thing when it comes to teaching, right? It's like people always ask, and I think there is a need because there's a shortage of math teachers. People like individuals like you who, again, I love this PowerPoint. I'm going to take it to work and share it with my colleagues. That's a great, to create interest around algebra and, and to do it and see the students talking about it, it just amazes me. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Fred.
Just very briefly, because so much has already been said, but I just want to congratulate you all. First of all, it was a great presentation. But for the work you've put in, and this was a long time. This wasn't, you know, something that happened overnight. Uh, I had actually gotten to see, you know, parts of this presentation last year at the CSBA conference where Ms. Casao and Ms. Almer were presenting and, uh, and the reaction of that crew, which is, you know, board members and administrators was very strong. They were, they were very impressed, a lot, a lot of reaction after, uh, the, you know, after the, um, seminar was over, you know, the, um, where people were coming up and asking more questions. So I think it shows just how successful we've been and how much that reflects so well on all of you. And, and being able to, you know, push yourselves beyond the, you know, the borders, you know, the mindset that you, you referred to that you're, you're so used to, and you all did that and, and worked so well together. And it's, you know, and it's been a great success for our district. And hopefully, as Dr. Weisberg pointed out, we'll, you know, we'll be able to continue this. Cause something we shouldn't just say, okay, we got to the end of it. No, no, let's use that and, you know, and keep moving forward. So, uh, thank you all. Great job.
I just want to mention one thing really. This has been one of the joys of my career. And I want to just put out there that giving teachers time and space and resources to collaborate made magic. And so that's really what we hope to continue.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to 11B, Report on Facilities and Technology Projects.
Good evening, President Tabit, Board Members. This evening, we have three updates around our facility and technology projects. Uh, the first two are the notice of completions from the one that I did last month. So the first, first one is the completion of the, the shockcrete. That was for the fencing around Disney. So that has been completed. And the second one's the actual fence around the childcare bungalow that we talked about last time. So both were completed on budget, on time. And then the last one, we have an additive change order of $20,000 for the asphalt. Given the duration of our project from the initial quote to the actual completion of work, there was a price increase. And these are all for a Disney project. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to new and indoor finished business. 13A, Adoption of Resolution Five, Proclaiming October 9th through October 15th, 2022 is the week of the school administrator.
President Tabit.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we adopt Resolution Five, proclaiming October 9th through October 15th, 2022 as the week of the school administrator.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Aga Khanian. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Are you reading?
Sure. Huh?
I'm sorry. You're right. Four zero. I'm going to have to.
Whereas school administrators are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education. And whereas the school, the title school administrator is a broad term used to define many education leadership posts, superintendent, assistant superintendents, directors, principals, assistant principals, special education and adult education leaders, curriculum and assessment leaders, school business officials, classified educational leaders, and other district employees are considered administrators. And whereas providing quality service for student success is paramount for the profession. And whereas most school administrators begin their career as teachers, the average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California's superintendents have served in education for more than 20 years. Such experience is beneficial in their work to effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement. And whereas school leaders depend on a network of support from school communities, fellow administrators, teachers, parents, students, businesses, community members, board trustees, colleges and universities, community and faith-based organizations, elected officials and district and county staff and resources to promote ongoing student achievement and school success. And whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents, these site leaders are supported by extensive administrative networks throughout the state. And whereas Burbank Unified School District has distinguished, passionate and quality site and district administrators, supporting the teachers, staff and students, and who deserve to be recognized for their service and dedication. And whereas the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership now. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of, uh, Burbank Unified School District, that all school leaders be commended for the contributions they make to successful student achievement.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. 13B, Adoption of Resolution Six, proclaiming October is Burbank Unified School District's Filipino-American History Month.
Madam President.
Dr. Aga Khanian.
I move that the Board of Education adopts Resolution Six, proclaiming the month of October 2022 as Burbank Unified School District's Filipino-American History Month as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you for the second, Dr. Weisberg. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries four zero. Would you like to read it?
Yes. Uh, Resolution Six, proclaiming October 22nd, the Burbank Unified School District's Filipino-American History Month. Whereas the Filipino-American community is the second largest Asian-American group in the United States with a population of approximately 3,100,000 people. Whereas Filipino-American servicemen and servicewomen have a longstanding history in the armed forces from the Civil War to the Iraq and Afghanistan conflicts, including the 25,000 Filipino fought under the United States flag during World War II to protect and defend this country. Whereas nine Filipino-Americans have received the Congressional Medal of Honor as the highest award of valor in action against the enemy forces than can be bestowed upon the individual serving in the United States Armed Forces. Whereas Filipino-Americans are an integral part of the American, uh, United States healthcare system as nurses, doctors and other medical professionals. Whereas Filipino-Americans have contributed greatly to the fine arts, music, dance, literature, business, journalism, education, science, technology, government, politics, fashion, other fields in the United States that enrich the landscape of the country. Whereas efforts should be continued to, to promote the study of Filipino-American history and culture as mandated in the mission statement of the Filipino-American National Historical Society. Because the roles of the Filipino-American and other people of color have been overlooked in the writing, teaching and learning of United States history. Whereas the imperative for Filipino-American youth to have positive role models to instill them in the importance of education, complemented with the richness of their ethnicity and the value of their legacy. Now be it resolved that the Board of Education, Burbank Unified School District Board of Education proclaims the month. Same mistake I made. Yeah, it is. The month of October as National Filipino-American History Month and encourages all schools in the Burbank Unified School Districts to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activity, activities. Passed, approved and adopted the sixth day of October 22nd.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 13C. Adoption of Resolution Seven in the Matter of Determining Sufficiency of Pupil Textbooks and Instructional Materials and Instructional Materials Funding Realignment Program, Certification of Provision of Standards-Aligned Instructional Materials, 2022, 2023.
President Tabit.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we adopt Resolution Sever- Seven in the Matter of Determining Sufficiency of Pupil Textbooks and Instructional Materials and Instructional Materials Funding Realignment Program, IMFRP, Certification of Provision of Standards-Aligned Instructional Materials, 2022, 2023.
Second.
Thank you and thank you for the second, Dr. Aga Khanian. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries four zero. I think we can waive reading this one, if you're okay with that. Okay, great. 13D, I was just thinking, if anyone can't sleep, they could record it and we could just. 13D, Approval of COVID-19 Protocols and Procedures for Overnight Field Trips for the 2022-2023 School Year.
Uh, President Tabit.
Yes, Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we approve, uh, COVID-19 protocols and procedures for overnight field trips for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Aga Khanian. We have some discussion, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will try not to go on too long, but, uh, I feel at the last meeting, there, there was a lot of emotion uh, because of the parents and students here and, you know, wanting to satisfy their needs. But we really didn't, we didn't really recognize the pathway on how we got to that point. A lot of people in that audience uh, certainly had lost faith in, in the administration and the principals because they thought this was uh, decis- these were decisions that were arrived at i- in a, in a non, um, logical manner. I've got a bit of a timeline I want to go through. At the June 16th meeting, um, we had a vote to approve, uh, seven of the elementaries, uh, overnight field trips. And that passed, I believe, four to one. I voted in favor of that. I will talk about my thoughts, why I voted yes at the time. I was thinking in terms of our overnight field trip policy, which was students had to be vaccinated. Everyone on the trip, students and staff and, and volunteers. The one aspect that I will admit I did not consider and clearly should have was that the percentage of students at the elementary level that were vaccinated was not nearly the same. that were vaccinated was not nearly the same as the secondary level. You know, the thought process in my head, again, I'm talking about my own vote. I won't, you know, I, I won't speak how anyone else was thinking about it. Uh, was we would maybe have a handful of students, just like we had, you know, the VMA trip, just like we've had on overnight science school trips in the past. There's always a few students who don't go for one reason or another. Clearly, that wasn't going to be the case because that would, the percentages were much higher. Uh, that should have probably been considered more closely. Uh, at our July twenty-first meeting, we had added an agenda item because we had had the, uh, students from Burbank High who had had questions about the cheerleading field trip that they, you know, wished to participate in. And it had been asked to bring it forward to discuss among the board, uh, which we did. And it was clear at that time, it was very clear at that time that the four of the five members were not ready to change that, uh, policy. Uh, Ms. Tabit, you clearly wanted to, but we, we persuaded you that the rest of us were not in that mindset. That we thought this was the policy that we should still stay, that, that should still stay in place. And the one request at that point was that this be brought back before the end of the semester. Now, I don't know about anybody else, but that sounded to me like sometime near the end of the semester that we would be bringing it back and reconsidering. But there was no date given. Well, at this point, our elementary principals are sitting there with a problem. They, they know that if they move forward with their trips, there's going to be a substantial number of students who cannot participate. Uh, and they know that the board has not shown an inclination to changing the policy and doesn't look like it's going to change it anytime soon. So at that point, they've started having meetings. And I think even before that, there'd been meetings and Dr. Knappick certainly would, uh, could back that up because he was part of all this and, and Dr. Hill and, and. Our principals were working to figure out what the best possible solution forward is. Now, a solution that wasn't likely to please everyone, certainly not all the parents and students. Uh, but there were varieties of opinions during these meetings and these were, th- th- these were not like fifteen-minute meetings. These, these were discussions over a great deal of time. And some wanted to continue moving forward, going, some didn't think we should at all, and then some were in between. But I, I wanna stress that these are people that we have chosen to lead our elementary schools. They are career educators. They know the schools better than, certainly better than I do. You know, they, they know their, their families, they know their students. And they don't take this lightly. There were a lot of people who said, why would you cancel these trips on, why would you take this away from the students? Uh, exactly, why would we wanna take it away from the students? Nobody wanted to take anything away from students. But faced with the reality of, you know, thirty, forty, fifty percent or more of your students not being able to go because of a board policy that the board had just, you know, reinforced. They know that, that had said, we weren't going to change that and probably not for the rest of the first semester. They worked together to come to what they thought was the. I, I, I was saying best solution is not, but the, the correct solution. That, and, and it would provide, and I know people were getting tired of the word equity, but would provide equity because the schools would be on the same page. And, and, and they were, you know, they were, they were trying to come to that type of solution. And they did. And, and of course, when the letter went out to the parents, a letter, by the way, which Dr. Hill shared with all of us before it went out, I know. I, I didn't object to that letter being sent out. Uh, you know, we had been discussed with board members that this was where we were at. And of course, that's when, you know, the parents, you know, mobilized much more. And I, I'm trying not to go on too long and I'm already going on, on long. I just feel like there was a lot of, a lot of work by a lot of people that we kind of steamrolled over at that meeting, that we should have. Dr. Knappick was here, we, we, maybe we should have asked him to speak to how this, you know, was arrived at instead of rushing through. And by the way, it's a policy, I'm still not sure, I'm ready to, I, I know everyone says, oh, we're, you know, we're past it and we should move forward. And I know the, the rest of you don't feel that way and that's fine, we don't have to agree. I've been on overnight science school trips, you know, it's, people say, well, they're, they're together all day in class. It's not the same thing. You're in, you, you're spending a lot of time in buses, you're in cabins, in, in small quarters, you're at meal, you're, it's twenty-four, seven that they're together. There was a, a trip several years ago at Edison Elementary that they came back after a day and a half because fluid gone through the entire camp. And there was so many kids sick that they had to come back and, and end the trip and it was missed. So it's not something to take lightly. And it takes a lot of planning and a lot of work to make these trips work. And the principals know that and the, and the teachers know that, the staffs. And this was what they arrived at. Now, I feel for the parents and, and the students and we have, obviously, there was a lot of sentiment and, and there's been a lot of work put in to now make it work for everyone again. Uh, and I appreciate all that work, but I just wanted it, you know, for, but, uh, uh, one other point I'll say was a lot of people said, well, if you already knew you were gonna have an action item, why, you know, why didn't you wait for that? At the September first meeting, board meeting, President Tabit asked for a discussion item to be brought forward at the next meeting regarding the field trip policy, the vaccine policy. A discussion item. And that's what was added to the agenda. There was not a request at that meeting that, that a, uh, an action item be added. So if people say, well, why did we, you know, why were we hiding that from the public? Why are we trying to change it? We were following the, again, the direction of the board. I, I, you know, and I've gone on long enough, but I, uh, before we went to vote on this, I just wanted to make sure that we were recognizing what went into all of that work and, and the decisions and how they were worked at. It wasn't just, you know, a willy-nilly decision that was arrived at out of nowhere. There was a lot of thought and a lot of process put into it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Weisberg.
I mean, I'll only speak for myself, but I don't think anybody up here, uh, at, when we made the decision in any way underplayed or underacknowledged the immense amount of work that our elementary principals put into making this decision. Speaking for myself, what I highlighted is a lack of understanding on my end and a lack of clear communication so that I could better understand when we were taking votes in the summer, what exactly we were voting on. And one of the things I talked with Dr. Hill about was my misunderstanding over the summer of when we were voting on like the cheerleading thing, that it was also something that included OSS. And that's something I take full responsibility for. I'm not entirely sure why we just tracked through the timeline. But I do think, you know, it's, it's, and, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you're trying to, to, to say. I, and I would, yes, feel fear, yeah.
I, I don't wanna interrupt you.
No, it's okay.
And the reason I put it that way was because of some of the responses we had heard even after the meeting.
Got it.
Of people saying, how, why did this happen? How did it happen?
Right.
Well, I wanted to show that there was, and again, people probably still aren't going to agree with it.
That's fine.
But there, there was, you know, a process and a timeline that we, and because of that timeline, it put the principals in a position of having to have that discussion and come to, you know, decisions that they might not have actually, you know, that might not have been their, their exact decision, but, you know, the, the one they, they all wanted. But because they were, they were looking at what they perceived was, you know, a policy that wasn't going to change.
Right.
Soon.
So, so one of the things that I.
That's why I put the timeline.
I, so that's helpful. And one of the things I asked Dr. Hill, cause we had a really long conversation about it, is, um, moving forward when we are making big policy decisions like this, is it possible in certain situations to be given sort of an overview of, okay, so if this is the way that you vote, these upcoming things are gonna be directly impacted. I think that's gonna be helpful for new board members. I think it's helpful for, for me at least, to have a sense of how the policy change or not change impacts moving forward. I, I think for me, and if we didn't make it, make it clear enough last time, I think that the, the responsibility falls on us for not having made the decision correctly or sooner or whatever it is. I don't think this decision in any way falls on our principals. I think we've asked them to do an enormous amount of calisthenics in the past couple of weeks to turn around and figure out a way to make this happen. I know Dr. Knappick has also done an enormous amount of gymnastics. As, I mean, as did everybody here to make this happen. So I think if it wasn't clear to people, we should make it clear that I, I view this as, as a, um, an error on our part. Um, and I take full responsibility for my lack of understanding in regards to the implication of our vote taking over the, over the summer. And I'm learning and that's something I fully own. But, you know, I think that our, our principals, to your point, uh, Mr. Fritterner, made the, the best decision they could make with the information that they had. And so I think it was a good learning lesson, at least for me. And how do we, when we have a decision like this moving forward? How, how, what, what do I, what information do I need as a board member to make the most informed decision possible? And that's important, right? Because I think we put families and teachers and our principals in a, in a really, really difficult position. I do, I don't feel like we made a decision based on emotion. Or at least, I, again, I'll speak for myself. I don't feel like I was making a decision based on the emotion in the room. I've certainly held my ground in other situations.
And I apologize, that was oversimplifying, but.
But I, but I also think in, in reference to your comment about being ready or not being ready, it's less, to me, it's less about, you know, oh, we're done with the pandemic. We know we're not, right? But I was, something I was talking with Dr. Hill about earlier today is where, where are we as a district in relationship to other districts? Because to me, it's an untenable position to be in if we're the only district who is doing or not doing something when both, you know, the state and surrounding districts and, you know, keeping in mind the, the, uh, swamp that Dr. Nieman wades through every day. So, so I'm not saying that you're wrong to feel that way, but what I am saying is I'm trying to allow, um, or to, to be more clear on what's happening around us when we either revise policy or create policy so that we, we've made some really difficult decisions that I think were the right decisions and I stand by them a hundred percent. And we did that with the knowledge of what was happening around us. And I think when we change and, and shift, we need to take that into consideration. But I also think to your point, there, we should be finding ways to have conversations with Dr. Knappick or Dr. Paramo, Ms. Crusoe, when we are doing this so that we can better, like I said, better understand the impact of our decisions, both in the moment and moving forward. So I appreciate, I appreciate what you said.
I think part of what, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of our, uh, choices and the way we handled things as a board directly impacted those principals. Not that we purposely did it, but we placed them in, uh, a no-win situation, really, where some of them had their reservations canceled without any knowledge because after all, those camps are a business, you're not responding, you're not saying, well, uh, maybe they might change their mind. They've gotta fill that camp, that's how they earn their money. And so in some cases, they just lost out without anybody doing anything. And, um, for that, I apologize to the principals, putting them in a, in a rough spot. They had all their fifth grade parents and their fourth grade parents and other parents looking down the line going, what's going on, what's happening? So, um, it was, it was tough. And I, I like your point, um, Dr. Weisberg, you're right. How do we going forward see a big decision? And what's the ripple effect of those decision-making? And so hopefully, even as ourselves as board members, it, we might have to not just wait for staff to tell us, but also go, okay, well, wait a minute, you know, what does this mean? You, you said something fairly, you know, correct, um, in that our secondary schools probably have a lot more student vaccinations and a lot less kids would be affected. But as I explained to one parent, you know, you're asking a principal to, um, take some of the kids, and I went like with fifty percent, even though the numbers are different at each school, uh, on a, um, standard-based trip and leave the other half at home. And how, forget about equitable, let's just talk about safety. Like, what do you do with the kids that have been left back at home? Are you with the kids who go on the trip? You know, it's a, it, you, you, you're, you're pulled in two directions. It's a, a virtually crazy decision to have to make. And Dr. Weisberg is correct when they say they make the best decision at that moment with the information that they had. So, moving forward, I hope this board, uh, can take a look at those big pictures and see what the ripples are and be able to make choices, um, uh, accurately for, for their thought process. I certainly appreciate, um, the principals who have, uh, all of them who have, uh, taken this and made the best of it as they can. I really thank Dr. Knappick, who, wow, went above his line of duty. In fact, when I saw him the next week, I said, hey, how you doing? He says, we're not talking about OSS. And I'm like, fair enough, fair enough. Because he worked very hard and, and had all of those schools now been scheduled for OSS at some point in time over the next year, uh, in an equitable fashion, um, where everybody will have the opportunity to experience, well, providing we pass this, outdoor science school, um, going forward, including Dr. Knappick, transportation. And so, uh, your work, um, Terry's work, your assistants' work, who I. Glenn, I couldn't think, Glenn, I apologize. That just made phone call after phone call after phone call to make sure this was going to happen, um, for these kids. So with that being said, we've all learned a great deal and isn't that why we're all here? To be lifelong learners. And so we'll take this experience, good and bad, and learn and grow from it, I'm hoping. That was my lecture for this evening.
I'm glad I came to your TED Talk.
Yes, yeah, I should tape those and put them out there, right? Okay, thank you. And so let's, are we, are you all right if I call further the vote? Did we get a motion and a second? Yes, we did.
Yes.
Cause we were having discussion. Thank you. So, um, we okay to vote? You're ready, anybody else have anything to say? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, one no and one absent. Okay. Thirteen E. Approval of agreement for the diversity, equity and inclusion consultant.
President Tabit.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the agreement for the diversity, equity and inclusion consultant.
Thank you for the motion and the second. And, uh, any discussion?
Just very excited.
Can I just do a brief overview? I know it's getting late, but this is critical work and we are very excited about. Uh, so our, this agreement with rooted leadership is gonna be led by Ms. Florence Culpepper, a very experienced educator, formerly principal, who's deeply rooted in DEI work. She's gonna be working with our principals. She's gonna be facilitating our all principal meetings throughout the year. Every single all principal meeting this year is gonna be focused on diversity, equity, inclusion. So she has mapped out, uh, a phased work plan to be able to build their capacity, create affinity groups so we can talk about the work, talk about the diversity, equity, inclusion goals that each site is working on and give our principals. that each site is working on, and give our principals additional tools to lead this work. In addition, she's going to be working with the principals and the diversity, equity, and inclusion teacher leaders that we are selecting at each site, where we're selecting their goals for the site, the collaboration, facilitation techniques to do this work. So this is allowing us to go much deeper in the work that we've started over the last couple of years. So very excited about this contract.
Okay, yes.
Just a good question. Will we, or can we receive updates at the end of each of those, or at, either at the end of each session, or at the end of the entire thing, so that we can get a sense of how it went, and hear some feedback from the principals? I assume we'll be doing, like, exit surveys, things like that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Fourteen F. Approval of employment contract for assistant superintendent of administrative services.
President Tabit.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the employment contract for assistant superintendent of administrative services as presented.
Second.
Was it amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Uh, just the amount changed.
How do I say that? As amended? Ah, so I move that we approve the employment contract for assistant superintendent of administrative services as amended.
Second.
Thank you for the motion.
One correction, Madam President, you said fourteen F. It's thirteen F.
Thirteen F, yes, thank you.
I did say fourteen F.
Sure did.
Yep, I own it. Okay.
I know that was.
Are we getting tired and a little punchy?
Yeah.
I'd said, put coffee over there, you guys.
I don't drink coffee. Equity. If I don't drink coffee, what?
We'll talk about it.
Okay. All right, thirteen F. Yes, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, four zero.
President Tabit, can, can I ask?
Too late. We're done. We're moved on. Just kidding.
Mr. Cantwell to join me at the podium, so that I can do a proper introduction.
I've been wondering all night who the man in the suit is on the side.
I immediately asked that.
Yeah. So we wanted to wait for the formal vote on the contract before we did an introduction, but it is my pleasure to introduce Andrew, goes by Andy Cantwell. Mr. Cantwell previously served as the assistant superintendent of business and administrative services, and later as superintendent of the Ojai Unified School District of Ventura County. He began his administrative career with the Santa Barbara County Education Office, working in finance and human resources. Mr. Cantwell earned his bachelor's degree in the proud school of UCLA, in the focus area of history. His Juris Doctorate and a master's degree in Business Administration from Washington University in St. Louis. He also received a school business management certificate from USC. He's a house, he's an individual divided, so.
Do the graduate work.
Which allowed him to become a CASBO-certified chief business officer, official. His wife, Heather, remains very busy with their four children, who range in the age from two years to nine years old. We welcome and congratulate Andy on his new role.
Thank you very much.
President Tabit and board members, I just want to say thank you. I'm so excited to be here this evening, and it's a real joy and honor to be joining this team. Past two days, I've been able to be up here, and so I've got a chance to meet a number of, of the folks, not just cabinet here, but some school site staff, as well as across the district. And the, the thing that I kept thinking about this afternoon was just this impression that this really is kind of the, the biggest little district perhaps in LA County. You know, that, I went over to Burbank High this afternoon, was able to catch the freshman football team, take a lead. I think it was forty-six, nothing when I left against Arcadia. It was just, it was, it was pretty incredible. But I, I ended up sparking up a conversation with a gentleman named Grant. I actually saw him up in the video, algebra one teacher at the high school, and was asking him how I got roped into actually doing the scoreboard. And he pointed down the field, and I believe his name's Adam, varsity coach, was down there, again, with the freshmen, not something all varsity coaches would do. Beside him was Pat, the athletic director, and he explained to me that these are both his math colleagues, and, and how great of a relationship they have as a math team, that when they asked him to lend a hand and stay after school, and stay, stay late to help out, he was willing to. And so I just saw, again, the community that exists here, especially amongst staff, really is something that seems exceptional. I'm just seeing, getting glimpses of it now, but I can see it even more so, or I've been hearing about it even more so and seeing it. After that, I was able to go over to Burroughs and was able to actually catch the first forty-five minutes of the, the concert, which was incredible. Again, the reputation for the music program, of course, is, is known throughout the state, and the reputation, certainly, the group lived up to tonight. Before I went in there, I, I sparked a conversation with a couple of parents, and two parents I spoke to were second gen, or their kids, who are now in the, the program, are second generation. So they themselves were Burroughs graduates, and now their kids were there. And that's something else I've heard a lot lately. It's just how much there are deep roots in this community. There's pride in the schools, that we have adults who are now seeing their children, who they themselves went to our, our schools. And so, you know, the staff relationships, the bond in community, it just seems like a great place to be. And so I'm, I'm excited to be joining this team. So thank you. Thanks a lot.
Welcome. Thank you for sticking around, too.
Of course.
Okay. Thirteen G. Thank you, Dr. Conian. Approval of proposed revision of selected board policies and administrative regs, regulations.
President Tabit.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the proposed revision of selected board policies and administrative regulations as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Thirteen H. Acceptance of gifts.
President Tabit.
Yes.
I move that the superintendent accept all of the gifts to the district, and that, or no, I'm doing it again. I move that the board president convey appreciation to the donors as presented in any tone you want.
Any tone I want?
I'm giving you free rein tonight.
Second.
Such pressure.
Ooh.
She just said British accent.
Really?
No, because we'll get you.
There we go.
In an authentic and graceful tone.
Happy, happy char. That's what I can do. Okay. Would like to express my heartfelt thanks and appreciation to the following donors. Theater Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district three thousand dollars to be used for peaceful playgrounds at Theater Roosevelt Elementary School. Theater Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district forty-one thousand ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents to be used for education through Music LA, ETM LA, at the Theater Roosevelt Elementary School. Theater Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district eight thousand dollars to be used, to be used for student supplies at Theater Roosevelt Elementary School. Theater Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district fifteen hundred dollars to be used for ceramic supplies at Theater Roosevelt Elementary School. Theater Roosevelt Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district six thousand dollars to be used for school assemblies at Theater Roosevelt Elementary School. Providencia Elementary PTA wishes to donate to the district seventeen thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-four cents to be used for the music program at Providencia Elementary School. The Black Bowd Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district three hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents to be used as needed at Dolores Wortham Middle School. The Black Bowd Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district three hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents to be used as needed at William McKinley Elementary School. Charities Aid Foundation America wishes to donate to the district a hundred and twenty dollars to be used as needed at William McKinley Elementary School. Julie Cho and Ryan Conda wished, wishes to donate to the district a hundred dollars to be used for the Emerson banner at Ralph W. Emerson Elementary School. And that is all. Thank you. That is all. That was a lot. Thank you so very much. Congratulations to all those schools and the PTAs for their outstanding fundraising abilities. Yeah, I was just, thank you. Consent agenda.
President Tabit.
Thank you.
I move that we approve items fourteen A through.
AH.
Fourteen AH, as presented.
There, there's, O has to be pulled because it's amended.
I'm sorry, tell me again.
Fourteen O needs to be pulled, because it's amended, so we have to do that one separately.
With the, okay, so with the, it's fourteen O, you said?
Yeah.
I move that we approve fourteen A through fourteen. AH with the exception of item fourteen O.
One second. We just want to confirm, the personnel report, does that need to be amended? There's a glitch in the computer system, or is that?
But one computer's crashed, all of our stuff.
Oh, no.
But it sounds like she might have.
So personnel report, is that right?
So I don't have to remove it. Back to the original plan. Okay, so I move that we approve item fourteen A to fourteen AH. What, fourteen what? N?
S.
Yeah, the end. That's all I got.
Through.
And then.
Fourteen P.
I just can't find it. Fourteen P through fourteen AH as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Warren, or consent agenda A through N and P through AH is approved. Now, fourteen O, approval of additional budget, restricted general fund unearned revenue as amended?
Mm-hmm. President Tabit.
Yes.
I move that we approve the additional budget restricted general fund unearned revenue as amended.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Any discussion? Do we need to talk about why it's amended, or?
So you will notice highlighted on your document that we needed, the amount that was increased in the budget for the restricted went up by a hundred thousand, so it's one, one million five forty-three nine four four.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Motion carries. That takes care of consent. And no request to address the board. Yep. We have four retirements. My friend Joseph Boyd, custodial supervisor, Phil Harris, electrician, Raffaela Lizagara, food services, and Maria Perez Delaluce, a para-educator. We thank you for your years of service. Some of them have, have been with us thirty-plus years. And so thank you for your years of dedicated service, and enjoy your retirement, most definitely. Seeing nothing else? The meeting is adjourned this evening at ten oh four?
Close enough.
Close enough.